Can everybody tonight, so can everybody hear me okay? Good, good, good. All right, let's go ahead and if you would join us in the open prayer, Mr. Lesher, and then pledge allegiance to the flag. If you please stand.
God of grace, you created us all in your image, equal in your eyes. Grant that we might honor your intent for us as we work together for a democratic society, upholding equality under the law, the peaceful transfer of power, ruling by majority while protecting the rights of the minority, and working to make, together to make a more perfect union. Remind us that you made us our brother's keeper, and keep us mindful of the needs of others as we work together for the fair governance of your people in Talbot County. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the nation under God, indivisible, and infinite. Okay, let's get started tonight on the agenda. So we've got, council has the agenda of July 26 before them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, I'm hearing none. The chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. All right. Next is the dispersments of July 20, July 19th and the 26th. Council has a chance to review them. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first up tonight is the update from the Maryland Environmental Service. Come on up. Mr. Tim Ford? Yep? Okay, we got Gary. Nice to see you guys again.
Nice to see you.
You as well. You must have been doing good because you've only been here, what now, like eight, nine months now?
Yeah, I made it.
Yeah, you made it.
Yeah, I told you, well, a year ago when I was here, I was like, hey.
Yeah, good job. Good job.
Thank you all for partnership.
Sure.
I fly through the first slides because you've all heard them a thousand times. But for those that haven't, we'll give you an update on who we are and what the partnership's all about.
Sure.
So the Maryland Environmental Service is an independent state agency. We affirmed last year in the General Assembly, we are an independent state. Provide water and wastewater and solid waste. For the state of Maryland, our customers could be primarily state and county government. We do have a few entities that work with, by and large, it's worked for. You wanted an example of probably the best way to sum us up is we're more of a utility. Most state agencies are regulatory, policy-based, or like a utility. Provides terminal services for. We operate on a fee-for-service contract, or our clients are under contract. We like to say that we're a not-for-profit, but we're also not-for-loss. So we do have to go for our services bill at a rate that covers overhead on our labor sales, and then everything else is pass-through. Organization. So that brings us to the partnership. The Midshore Partnership is an 80-year agreement. It was an 80-year agreement, first entered into 30 years ago. And it was a coalition of the four upper counties. Started with three, but it ended up with four upper counties. Now we're, each county, can you hear me? Sorry. Am I mumbling?
Right.
Just tell me to be clear. I talk too quickly too, so if I'm going too fast.
It's actually with the people at home, it's, you know, listening to it. You gotta really get right up to it.
Okay.
There you go.
I got it.
Yep.
So 30 years ago, the four counties had the foresight to combine the solid waste management for counties under a single agreement. There was a change in regulation where the existing landfills that were in the counties at the time were regulated out of business. Subtitle D landfill regulations went into effect in 92. And so every county was faced with the option of having to build their own landfill. And when you look at the economies of scale, if you're limiting your volumes to just your solid waste, the cost would have been incredibly high. The four counties and the folks that were, that were political realm at that time had the courage to look forward beyond a couple of years of their terms and say, look, this makes the most sense for us. We'll get together, we'll each host a landfill, but we'll combine all the volume for the four counties and gain the economies of scale. They reached out to MES to help manage that, and here we are 30 years later. So we're 30 years into an 80-year agreement. Midshore One landfill was the first. That was Talbot County. They were the first in the gate. Closed that landfill 10 years ago. We now operate the drop-off at the old landfill site as well as a transfer station. Transfers waste generated in Talbot County over to Midshore Two. Project is funded by Talbot County. Transfer fee on waste transfer to Midshore This coming fiscal year. MES in Talbot County Amendment, Act 110812 on 2020, extended the term of the agreement through December 31st, 2030. Where we are with it. So the numbers. So over the last six months, we received 19,263 tons. Tons of yard waste, 2,132 tons. Hodo saw 12,107 customers. County sells punch cards. County residents to use that facility sold 21 $5 cards, 708 $10 cards, and 1,020 $20 cards. So you can see which is a popular option.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
So of the 12,000 customers, how many are like unique? How many county residents do you think actually utilize the homeowner drop-off since all the people in municipalities have trash pickup?
A lot of the customers are. Apparently something that we try to, I'd be.
Folks in the incorporated areas have solid waste services through their towns.
Right.
These are the unincorporated areas. Those are the folks that generally use the homeowner drop-off.
I know my neighbors don't have any.
And then we have some folks on the borders that go to Holly Road, which is free. Benefits of hosting a landfill is that the four counties are able to use that, that homeowner drop-off free. Open to all four counties, but it's a distance. People don't want to drive all the way over to. Place, but.
Because you said that's only the incorporated towns that have. What has trash pickup in Talbot County? Just the town of Easton, Oxford, and St. Michael's?
As far as I know, yes.
Unless you hire a private hauler, which may.
Unless you haul a private hauler, which you can do in the counties as well. It's not prohibited from entering into a subscription service with one of the major haulers. And those folks do use Midshore Two as a landfill, and we do transfer commercial waste to the county transfer station. That answer your question? Good. All right, so what does that mean year over year? There's about an 8% downtick year over year in volume. It was about the same as it was two years ago. So we had a bit of a surge last year. A lot of that was COVID-related. There were a lot of folks, nothing else to do. They were cleaning out their garages and attics, and we saw an uptick. It was all across the board everywhere, not just here in. One of the initiatives that we undertook was we picked up an excavator loading scale. The idea was to try to improve transfer efficiencies. You want to haul legal weights out as much as you can. Prior to that, you had to cross the scales and come back through, and you had to offload or unload. Made it a lot easier to get the inaccurate weight one time out, and it increased our efficiency from 18 to 19 per load. Well, doesn't sound like much, does it? Ton per load. But when you look at the total number of loads for that six-month period, that equates to about $17,000 in savings, about $32,000 on the year. And that's, since we charge on a cost basis, that's all returned back to the county. Gary's idea was.
Group of folks.
Yeah. So Midshore One post-closure. What do we mean by post-closure? Well, under the federal and state regulations for landfill, landfills, when you close a landfill, you enter into what is known as a post-closure period. For estimating purposes, that's 30 years. So during the life of the landfill, you accrue for those costs. And then when you enter into the post-closure period, you use those monies for post-closure care. Reality, it's probably into perpetuity. I haven't seen a landfill yet, although the regs were only introduced in 92. So those landfills are now just ones that were started then are just now starting to capacity. So another 30 years, we'll know whether that's actually able to close or not, but the estimates are no. But in any event, that's what the post-closure care period is. But we sell carbon, since it's a voluntary carbon collection, there we flare the material of the carbon off, the methane off of the landfill. So because we flare it and because it's voluntary, we're able to claim landfill credits or carbon credits. We generated 17,902 carbon off-site credits. That resulted in $47,000 in revenue, which we plow back into the closure funds. Still 4,345 credits remaining to be sold. And that continues on. Ford? Another initiative that we looked at is we have, there's a engine that we can use at small scale to generate electricity for the site. Used now in the fracking industry predominantly. And the manufacturer thought it would be adaptable to the landfill, so we're trialing that out. If it's successful, we'll be able to generate enough energy, enough electricity to power the site. That'll result in savings. We were able to get a grant from the Maryland Energy Administration to cover 65 project costs if it does work out. So it's free money, and again, it'll add to the savings. And then we're looking at an RFP. We've had a lot of interest from folks that want to put solar on old landfill. So we're going to explore that in a bid, our request for proposal this year to see what, how that pans out. And if we're able to generate electricity out of those, that too will generate some revenue, which we'll be able to plow into the closure fund. So that brings me to Midshore Two. So Midshore Two at Ridgely, that's the current active landfill. 1,344 tons of billable trash. Billable trash is what we can charge for. The Holly Road Hodo trash doesn't generate any revenue. It's a small amount, but doesn't count towards a total billable trash. 62,000 tons. 3,500 tons of brush, 10 tons of scrap tires, mattresses. We recycled 23 tons of mattresses. That's primarily, we have a trailer spotted there, and those are primarily commercial folks that bring in, sell mattresses. They bring us in by trailer load. And then the Holly Road.
How do you recycle a mattress? What happens?
They take them apart, physically take them apart, take the wood out, the springs. The springs are metal that's really valuable. There's just a lot of labor involved in it, though it's not high-margin work. But they are able to cover the, you know, the wood and the mattress. Holly Road Hodo generated 1,034. So we're working in cell three right now. That opened up in 2020. We have, as the agreement stands now, the landfill will close in eight years. So we're evaluating the remaining space. Yet to make a decision on whether we need to construct. Hoping we don't have to, but if we do, that's part of the evaluation.
So it was supposed to go each one for 20 years, but they have not. They're what percentage of capacity? They've got a long way to go in Caroline County, right?
They've got another 15 to 20 years remaining once we close. 15 years, I think.
They're approximately one-third filled right now.
Right, but technically, since they've been operating it since 2010, 2030 would be their 20-year agreement.
Correct. That'll be the end of the agreement, and we'll leave with remaining space.
And you'll leave it, and you will move to the next county regardless?
We will move to the next county if that is what the four counties decide. Right, there's still discussion about the possibility of remaining, although that's hypothetical right now. There is just an election. Pan out. Our plan currently is that we're moving forward with Midshore Three in Quinians County.
But there's limitations on opening new landfills. The state's not real thrilled with the idea of opening new landfills, especially if there's remaining capacity at the one that's existing.
They weren't re-thrilled eight years ago. That narrative changed. Hogan and who knows what will happen.
You have another election in a few months.
Going forward, but as it stands now, they're perfectly fine with, and have accepted our application, and we're proceeding forward. And that's Midshore Three. So we have submitted the phase one, it's a multi-part permit application. So phase one is just basic information. Where is the site? Do you have zoning? Do you have, is it in your solid waste plan, the county's solid waste plan? Hypothetically, which is the layout landfill. We've done that engineering work already. That phase one permit application to MDE. What'll happen next is a public informational meeting will be held on that phase one application. And we will begin preparation for the science part of it, which is phase two. You look at the geology of the site, your operating plan. You develop your design for the actual landfill itself, the infrastructure that goes along with the landfill. That'll all be designed through that phase two and phase three applications. And then as part of the phase three, you develop your construction documents. That timeframe is in that phase. Basically, we're still projecting that we'll be on time for the closure of Midshore Two. Go build, or sell ready to receive trash, soft trash received. So soft trash is that first layer that you put in just residential trash on the first layer. You don't bring anything that could puncture, threaten the integrity of the liner itself, and then you build off of that. So we will, we are projecting at this point still within schedule to complete the design and the construction and the permitting of the landfill by the close of two landfills. So that leads us to the recycling program. Government agreement, public county and MES for recycling management services. We're in the process of renewing that for one additional year. We do that on a year basis. And it just, there's a lag. We're renewing services and fully expect that the agreement will be signed. We're working on that agreement. But it's just the recycling agreement. The drop-off areas you see all throughout the field. Just text on that is that collected 265 tons of plastic, 358 tons of mixed paper, which goes up to Kent County and Creoffill. Supporting a local business in Kent County. Carboard was 518, 400 tons of glass. This is a more separated material, so the glass is very clean, and we can generate a market for that and actually sell it. Very difficult in modern recycling facilities. Single stream, broken up and mixed. Can't mix the colors up effectively recycled. So it becomes a material like gravel. And they use it for landfill covers as well. Out of those systems, in our case, we're able to send this back to a glass recycler who separated that color, and then he recycles it back into that color graph. There's a total of 1,541 collected. Now, that's a small percentage of your overall tonnage. It's landfill, but that's just the unincorporated areas. Still have a lot of commercial recycling going on in the four counties. Residential folks still get cycling services within the incorporated areas. There's still some subscription services. So all told, I think the counties, the four counties, because they collectively combined their numbers, 50%.
50%. 2021.
That's a good number. Very good number statewide. And we're getting a high price because of the material, the way it's collected. It's clean. We get a, we get a high barrel that we are able to generate. And that goes back in to help subsidize the cost of the recycling program. So the way that works is we have a, basically a surcharge on the tipping fee into the landfill that accounts for the cost to operate the Midshore Recycling Partnership. That's currently $5. Done, and that's what we use to sub. And then whatever commodity revenue we can generate, then we account for that year. Any of the revenue that is in excess of operating cost are reserved and used for that recycling program. And we also try to get out into the community. We were at the Strawberry Festival, include that one. As far as Talbot County is concerned, there's only one festival, and that's the Waterfowl Festival. Worth that. Collected 300 pounds, a lot of beer cans.
Okay.
Any questions?
That's great. Counsel?
Thank you.
Go send you back again. Great job.
My question's answered, thank you.
Mr. Vellio?
What are the drop-off hours on the weekends?
Drop-off hours on the weekends for Midshore One is eight to 12.
On Saturday?
On Saturday. Sorry, just Saturday.
And it seems like, you know, so the average person working during the week, you know, the weekends when they're trying to get anything done, cleaning things out, it's kind of hard to get up there. And we address that only the municipalities have trash pickup. So just bear with me here, because I'm getting to a point much later tonight. So you do a lot of work to take care of the trash, to save the environment, versus the individuals who, like me, live out in the county, have the burn barrel and, you know, burn your trash and bury it down a little bit deeper.
Hypothetically, of course.
Yeah, you know, you're much better for the environment. So it just seems to me that we should be focused on the growth within the municipalities with the trash pickup. It's much more environmentally cautious or conscious for everyone.
Well, and a good measure of how well your homeowner drop-off is, how much trash do you see outside of the road, dumping? Or where we see it mostly is folks are frustrated the place is closed. We see it outside the gate.
Yeah.
I'm happy to say that in some of the different areas in the state, that's really prevalent. I don't think it's too bad.
Yeah, not, especially Midshore One, not very often. So Midshore occasionally not have their load covered correctly. Trash along the road.
Gotcha.
Right.
Another reason to build within the municipalities.
Segue.
I'm interested to hear about your generator at Midshore One. I seem to recall that Eastern Utilities ran a generator there for a while.
Yes.
But discontinued it because, of course, over time, the gas yield, the methane yield tapers off. Do you, are you, but you're still finding enough gas there to collect to run that generator and to make, to make profitable use of this? Is it simply a smaller generator than what had been there before?
Correct, very small. You know, the quality of the gas certainly over time will fail off. The issue with that generator was economic decision. So it becomes not so much that you can't burn the gas in that size of a generator. It just becomes a hands-on issue. They have to, much more maintenance as the quality of the methane starts to diminish. And so we found that the juice wasn't worth the squeeze for them at some point. We were still able to flare the material or the methanes. They were still capturing credits. We were getting REX, which is a different type of energy credit for generating electricity. Imagine if you have to go through the folks that certify that, but we would qualify for REX for this smaller generator as well. Carbon credits we get. So all in all, I think we'll be okay. They were able to maintain that generator, the larger generator profitably.
If I could add just one thing. This is, this technology is just slightly different than the generator that Eastern Utilities use. It's an old technology, but they've kind of innovated on it, especially in the oil, gas, and that gas industry, as Tim mentioned. And it's not directly combusted in a cylinder. It's used to kind of heat the gas inside the cylinder. So they believe that even at lower methane concentrations, this engine will work. And pointed out, we kind of engaged them in. We're going to pilot test this engine at the landfill first before we buy it. Buy it, we'll have that.
Quality of gas. Have to really have a mechanic there dusting those generator with the large, just nonstop, all the time, full-time staffing, and that just was cost prohibitive.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, guys. Go ahead.
No, I just want to say, your remarks about the tonnage at the Waterfowl Festival, that's probably more red wine bottles than tin cans.
Yeah, 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 yeah. True. Which is good.
Either way.
For your wine merchants in the county.
All right, guys, thank you. Thank you, Tim, Gary. Appreciate it. Appreciate the good update. Okay, next on the agenda is council consideration of the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendation of the requirements of the temporary closed Three Bridge Branch Road for the Chesapeake Bay Balloon Festival. So the festival is going to be starting, you know, August, August 5th. So we want everybody to enjoy that. So Mike, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Certainly. Good evening. So I'm here representing the Traffic Advisory Committee, which consists of the sheriff, Gamble, Warren Edwards, road superintendent, Brian LaCates from Emergency Service Public Works. So as has become a perennial event, the Chesapeake Bay Balloon and Wine Festival, 5th and, or the 5th, 6th, and 7th of August. And the event, most of the parking is on one side of Three Bridge Branch Road, and the event activities are on the other side. So we're seeking the opportunity to close the road as necessary to help direct traffic and pedestrians back and forth across the road. So the recommendation would be to close the road to traffic from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Friday, Saturday. And that would be at the discretion of the sheriff.
Okay. All right then. Counsel, any questions or Mr. Pack?
I don't think I have any questions. This is becoming pretty standard as far as this request. Unless there was any objection from the Traffic Advisory Board as to why we would not close the roads during those times. And it seems to be. And it seems to be something that's been manageable as far as getting people safely around that part of the county without any issues. So, again, unless there was an extreme reason why we would not do this, I would support the times that you've indicated. And as you said, given the, the sheriff's department, its discretion, if they see fit to adjust those hours to do so.
Ms. Price?
Nope, looks like everything is up to the payments and things.
Okay. Mr. Devilio, good?
Seems to me, a few years ago, a couple of members of this council put together Economic Development and Tourism into one department. And I'm glad that they did that. When you look around different parts of the community, Parks and Rec is part of Economic Development in some of our competing counties. And that's why you see these big ball fields, AstroTurf fields, sports complexes that bring people in, whereas we have tourism and economic development together. So, I, I love these types of events. I say it every year. Waterfowl Festival is a fantastic event, it's been a great example. And I'm glad that the Spies family, a wonderful family, farming family, that's coming up on a century farm here in Talbot County, have stepped up and added another opportunity for Talbot County to be on the front of many magazines across the country. It's a beautiful event, it's family-friendly, I don't know what more we could ask for than to advertise it a little bit more and watch the tourists come over here, empty their pockets, not use our resources, and go home. Thank you. Don't bother our way of living and just leave us your money, we appreciate it. So, I would, as one council member, be more than happy to offer my support in any possible way to continue to make this event successful and as easy on the Spies family as well, because they are just a family who are doing this. They're not, none of them have backgrounds in event planning, certainly to this scale. Nobody would have ever thought of something getting to this. But this is just a prime example of, again, when you keep your, your municipalities together, leaving farmland, big, wide-open spaces, the wonderful events that you can have. So, I, I appreciate you guys working with them. I know there've certainly been challenges. Anytime there's something new, there always will be. And traffic is always a challenge because you're dealing with users and, you know, they're, they're not always ones to just follow along. So, I, I appreciate the challenge that you're up against and, and thank you for all the hard work that it's been.
Thank you. Okay. All right, at this time, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the, the temporary road closure as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, sounds great.
Very good, thank you very much.
Good job, thank you. Okay, all right, next, got the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, and read the bill fifteen twenty-two, please, in the record? That'd be great.
Bill number fifteen twenty-two, a bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the county to borrow not more than twenty-four million nine hundred thousand dollars in order to finance and refinance, A, the acquisition, renovation, and/or construction of a Talbot County public safety building, and B, the acquisition, renovation, and/or construction of a Talbot County Health Department facility, and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections nineteen dash two oh five and nineteen dash two oh six of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds, and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Lane, you want to go ahead and explain the bill a little bit, and then I'll open it up to the, to the hearing, public hearing.
Good evening, council. This bill is to authorize the county to actually borrow funds for the acquisition and renovation of a public safety center and a health department for the county. Both of these facilities have their separate capital-enabling legislation that has been approved by the county council. And this is the bill that allow us to borrow the funds to lead the projects.
Okay, sounds great. All right.
Before she runs away, since we have separate capital-enabling bills for that, why is it just one bill for the two?
Well, you're, we're going to do one bond issue. Both projects will be part of the one bond issue. So, we only need one bill to authorize the borrowing of the bonds. And Section six twelve D. of the Charter requires the county to have separate legislation to authorize the borrowing separate from the capital project.
Want the public to understand why there's one public hearing on one bill with two separate capital-enabling legislations?
But there'll only be one bond issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, at, at this time, we'll go ahead and, and open the public hearing. And anybody that wishes to speak, I'll allow you to come up and speak for three minutes. And then if you're representing an organization, I'll give you five minutes. So, I'll start right over here to my left. Would anybody like to come on up and, and speak about fifteen twenty-two? Fifteen twenty-two, okay? All right, anybody on my right want to, want to speak about fifteen twenty-two? Okay. All right, at, at this time. See if it wants to come up. Okay, that's fine. All right, Madam Secretary, want to go, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing? Okay?
Is this time? Was it, I was about to ask it.
It, it's, it's ready to, it's ready to be voted on.
This is the second.
Oh, this is.
Second reader. So, we need to move it to the.
So, make a motion.
Let me ask a question, is this, and I was going to, and I will go with your motion. Is this time-sensitive, Ms. Lane, to be moving this? Okay.
Do, do I have a?
Motion to move it to third reader?
Second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion, a second, to move it to third reader.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the bill of fifteen twenty-two, please?
Bill number fifteen.
I asked that so much, you're reading.
Okay, great, all right. Council, anybody have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I think that, as Ms. Lane explained, the, these two building projects are, this council has been ringing the bell about the capital projects that was going to have to be undertaken. This is going to be pushed into the next council to, and possibly the council, well, hopefully the next council have to build the, the public safety building. That has to be built, because we do know that the business center is coming down. And we do know that the health department has been in an aged building for some time. And our Buildings Department has done its very best to keep them in that building for as long as they possibly can. They've done work around the inside and outside of that building over on Hanson Street. But it is, it is a severely aged building. And so, it is appropriate that council makes way for them to move into new operating quarters. So, the, the next council is going to have to undertake this. And so, to, to build these two buildings out, our sheriff's department needs to get out of the business center, because that's going to come down soon. We're going to need more public safety space for other training activities and things of that nature. So, we've, have a location in mind, I, I think, that to move the sheriff's department into and allow some, some moderate growth as well without constructing from the ground up. The health department, I think we still have some work to do as far as where to relocate them to. We have some time yet under, to do that, but I hope we reach a decision where to move them to shortly. But I, I certainly support us taking action on this this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price? Are you good? Mr. Devilio?
I'm, I'm prepared.
Okay. Mr. Lesher? Good? Hey, Madam Secretary? Are prepared? Can you go ahead, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It was already, she's already done that.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm for vote now.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay. All right, moving on to eligible vote, the Resolution three thirty-one. Madam Secretary, could you read that into the record, please?
Resolution number three thirty-one, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at two nine six five nine Matthews Town Road, Maryland Route three twenty-eight, Eastern Maryland, shown on Tax Map twenty-six as parcel forty-five, and located on K Mac Street, Eastern Maryland, shown on Tax Map twenty-six as parcel one eighty-six, from W two and S two Planned Water and Sewer Service in three to five years to W one and S one Immediate Priority Status.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, you want to come on up?
And councilman present.
Yes.
I do have an amendment that I would like to offer to this, just for clarification of a typo that we found in it.
Okay.
Would that be appropriate to do that at this time?
Um, sure.
Okay. So, I would like to introduce an amendment to Resolution three thirty-one to change parcel one eighty-six to parcel one eighty-six, parcel C., and change the acreage therefore from two point one six acres to one point seven acres throughout the resolution. Yes, for a show of hands for the direction of the.
Sure.
Introduction of the amendment.
Yes, yeah, it needs to be changed. I think that's what Mr. Clark was about to do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
As it relates to that amendment, we did find through Sstat, we had identified the parcel as Tax Map twenty-six, I'm sorry, yeah, Tax Map twenty-six, parcel one eighty-six. Unfortunately, there are two par, or three parcels that are actually referred to as Tax Map twenty-six, parcel one eighty-six.
Can you bring that up, so the council can know what you're, what you're referring to specifically and the public as well?
Nope.
No, no. Because this was actually brought to my attention while I was away, that there was a discrepancy in how this particular parcel was titled. So, let's be clear on exactly what we're talking about.
For everybody here, ultimately, the proposed Camp One Sewer Plan would amend Tax Map twenty-six parcel forty-five, which is the lands, sorry, the estate at the Ganon Farm. And then, you can't see it here because of the darkness, but the parcel that is actually listed as Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty-six, it's actually a parcel that's owned by the town. Unfortunately, when we looked at, or I guess Sstat, this parcel is also identified as Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty-six, as well as this little parcel next to the town parcel. My understanding, after talking with, with the Maryland Department of Assessment and Taxations as well, or they emailed us, ultimately, they, when the Platts came in, they designated the town parcel as Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty-six, parcel C. The other item, or the other parcel was parcel right here. This parcel right here, which is just kind of, let's say, west of the town parcel, that is actually parcel A. And ultimately, the small parcel that's right there next to the town parcel, that's parcel A. So, we've, by, by the amendment, that would change or correct the, the resolution by calling it out as the Tax Map, or I'm sorry, Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty-six, parcel C. So, that would be the property.
I got you.
I think, yes, first, again, the council had asked for some information on this resolution. I can provide that to you.
Yeah.
Ultimately, just for clarifications, I guess, back, I guess, in two thousand and seven, the county, I guess, had introduced Resolution one forty-six, which was Hunter's Mill at the time. At that point, they were looking at about three hundred and ten houses or residential properties with that that basically was, I think, associated with this blue parcel. Most of Hunter's Mill, or part of Hunter's Mill was actually on a section of the property that was designated as S one, W one for immediate priority status. The parcel, I guess, that we were looking at was Tax Map twenty-six parcel forty-five. And so, they ultimately were looking at having that reclassified for S one, W one Sewer Service. I believe, going through the findings of fact during, during that time, the Public Works Advisory Board, as well as the Planning Commission unanimously voted on a motion to recommend the county council not adopt Resolution one forty-six. And I think that was associated with the fact that the Eastern Wastewater Treatment Plant had not been finalized at that point in time. So, I think that was part of the decision-making process at that point. But ultimately, the council did vote on that. And I guess that was done back in, I think it was sometime in October, but it may have been right after the public hearing. I don't have a date on it. The next item, I guess, I have here is kind of showing what's in our Camp One Sewer Plan today, which ultimately reflects what was shown in two thousand and seven. This is the parcel where I guess that, one of the things, I guess, was a feasibility study was done. This is the parcel, I think, is the, well, this is the parcel of the state farm. And again, the town parcel that partly is in the S one and W two, um, S one and W, S two. That being said, the, I guess, kind of walking through this, the, there, there is this parcel here, which is also, again, the Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty-six, I believe is also parcel A. Ultimately, there was a feasibility study, and it's owned by Aspire, or Aspire Outdoors LLC. And they had a part of their feasibility study, they were looking at seven apartment dwellings units that were off of C Mac Street. So, that was, but, you know, at the point in time, we've not, you know, it's in the sewer service area. So, we've not seen anything associated with that. This was just a sketch rendering provided in the feasibility study. With that, this is, I guess, the plat that came out with the Hunter's Mill. That included the fifty houses in Hunter's Mill. Again, this was already classified as S one. So, this was done back in two thousand and seven or eight-ish. With that, we have, again, this is kind of showing, this is the Hunter's Mill here, in this area here. It has been built out, is shown, I guess, both in the two maps, it's showing where the farm, I'm sorry, the estate at Ganon Farm is being, trying to be reclassified from S two, W two to S one, W one. Again, for those that don't know, S two, W two is basically a future planned area for water and sewer service as defined by our Camp One Sewer Plan. That is sewer and water probably within three to five years. So, this was, again, going back to two thousand and seven, so we're looking at about fifteen years. That being said, we showed that. This is actually the state Ganon Farms. They're currently looking at two hundred houses. They do have a commercial lot, which is up here in the corner. And at this point in time, they, again, looking at two hundred houses with one commercial unit. And if you added the Hunter's Mill, you'd have two hundred and fifty houses versus, I guess, what was proposed with the, let's say, Resolution one forty-six, which is three hundred and ten houses. However, you know, I will say that, you know, we don't have anything as far as Hunter's Mills back in nineteen, or in Resolution one forty-six that identified anything associated with apartments or commercial property. So, those are kind of the difference between the two of, you know, projects. And I think there are representatives from the town here, as well as the developer, that can help explain if there's any questions.
Just a quick question.
Yep, Ms. Price.
Commercial parcel, what, is there an intent on what might go there?
I do not know at this point in time. I think they're still going to have to look at that and work through the planning office within the town as to what would go on that parcel. I don't think they.
What's purpose? I mean, there's so many commercial areas throughout.
Um, I would, and again, I would have to let the town or the developer talk more about that. I'd be speculating on that. And just for the councils aware too, again, kind of the process, this would be amending the Camp One Sewer Plan to reclassify Tax Map forty-five, I'm sorry, Tax Map twenty-six parcel one eighty, parcel forty-five and one eighty-six parcel C. to become immediate priority status. Once that's voted upon, voted upon by the council in the majority, that would then be sent up to M D E. Basically, as an impending. basically as an pending, um, resolution waiting their approval. I think one of the things I would point out, this is in the town, the incorporated limits of the town. And ultimately, there is capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as in their water system, to serve the parcel. You know, so from that standpoint, it is, you know, again, within the town.
Um, Mr. Clark, how long has this been within the town limits?
I'm going to say 15-plus years, because I don't know the actual number. I know that Resolution 146, um, that was probably done in about, it was 2007, so it's over 15 years.
The entire, the entire parcel was annexed in 2001.
2001, okay, so 2001. And you said this was unanimous with the Planning Commission and Public Works Advisory Board?
With our Planning Commission, in the last Plan Commission, I believe the Plan Commission did vote 5 to 0, finding that this was, this was consistent with the comp plan. And I believe the Public Works Advisory Board basically voted for resolution, or, or voted on a motion recommending the County Council adopt Resolution 331 via 3 to 0 vote.
Thank you.
Well, I'm...
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Park.
Yeah, a few things. I'm glad that we have clarity on, um, parcel 186. We do have two, I believe, um, letters in the file that that parcel, that piece will remain basically open space. Someone has a buffer between the existing development at Hunter's Mill and this, and the Gannon Farm as a possible passive park with maybe some bathrooms and a water fountain of such. So, it is my understanding that that rectangular parcel that we now recognize as 186C will not be developed, but will remain open space, and we have that. I believe, Mr., I think Zach, we have a letter from you to that effect, and I think we have a letter from the Mayor Willie to that effect. So, that is part of the file, that 186C will remain open space. So, whatever action we take this evening or beyond should be with the understanding that now that we have clarity on 186C, that that is to remain open space and undevelopable under this agreement of 331. And I, and I've had some concerns, um, about the development. Mr. Clark, and you did, thank you for coming up and sharing. The one section that's owned by Aspire LLC Outdoors, um, I believe they have, already have a PUD, and that's already S1, W1, so they don't need to come to the council for any changes to the Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan. But to my understanding, that, that development is slated for 120 apartments, correct?
I did not, I was not able to find out that number of apartments.
I'm going to tell you what I know about that. That, that parcel is slated for 120 apartment units. And I do not believe, and if I'm wrong, then someone just correct me, I do not believe that, um, they were counted into any traffic study that was done on, on the impact to Matthews Town Road. As a matter of fact, you know, you alluded to the previous council's decision on Resolution 146, and I was a part of that council back then. And one of the things that, uh, town council, particularly Mayor Willie, when speaking about the impact on Matthews Town Road dealing with 146, um, was this. And I'm reading right from page 82, um, from the transcript on dealing with 146. And he says, and this is from Mayor Willie, he said, "We have, we had the same issues today we had five years ago with Matthews Town Road, or State 328," I guess it is, he says. "There are a couple alternative plans that have, that have been indicated, and those alternative plans was the east-west connector, which the price tag back then was around $15 million." And he continues on, "Such as a road that may be using Black Dog Alley." Well, Black Dog Alley is a county road, and we just resurfaced that road. I know Warren isn't here to talk about the, uh, the amount of traffic we're seeing on Black Dog Alley. We tried to limit the size of the trucks traveling on Black Dog Alley, because it's used as a cut-through, as you know, from 50 down to Dover Road. And it's been, it's been an issue keeping a lot of those heavier vehicles off of Black Dog Alley as it is right now. But he goes on, and, and he says, "You talked earlier in the season about using, about using an overpass at 322 and 50." Well, we've talked about overpasses since, you know, for the last 20 years. And, and I don't think the state's ever going to build an overpass here, ever. And, and he makes, you know, he alludes to that as well. And he goes on and says, "I, I think those things have got to go into place before we can take increased development in that area." I'll say again, I think those things have got to go in place before we can think, before we can take increased development in those areas. And, of course, we all know that the east-west connector has not been done. We all know that there has not been an overpass created to mitigate traffic. And, you know, when you look at the original proposal for, for that area was, I think it's a little bit more than 300 homes. I think it was around 500 homes. But if you look at this proposal here for 200 homes, Hunter's Run is already at 50 homes. The apartment complex on Elliot is another 120 units. You know, you're halfway there now in as far as the impact on Matthews Town Road. So, I just think that that issue, not less than someone here from the town can tell me differently, have those issues been addressed regarding Matthews Town Road and traffic? I mean, it was said that we have to either build a east-west connector or an overpass to mitigate the, the traffic on Matthews Town Road. And I don't know whether those things have been done. If they have been, and I just missed them, let me know. And the last thing I, I want to say regarding this, and these are my concerns. These may not be the council's concerns, these are my concerns. This county council pays 50% of our budget to our public schools, 50% of our budget to our public schools. So, I asked the, I asked the schools to give me their opinion on development along Matthews Town Road, and development in, you know, in, in the town that's going to impact the, our school system. And I have back here, and all council has the same, the same letter, from Mr. Schaefer. And he says, uh, he talks about the...
Excuse me, what, what three developments does that letter reference?
You look on the front, on the front...
I don't have the letter with me. I was just giving it earlier, I'm sorry. But it, at the top of that letter, it says that there are three, there are three developments.
He's passing it down to you, look at him, passing it down. I can ask you on question.
But it's not beside all of it.
Yeah, no.
Housing yield study for Gannon Farm Development, Elliot Road Apartments, and Poplar Hill Development.
Right. Okay, so you got...
So, off, so you've got...
Yes.
Three. Do we know, okay, so you're, you're incorporating Poplar Hill Development into this letter from December 21?
This letter is talking about all development is going to impact the school system, which this, this council pays 50% of the budget. I'll, I'll be paid 50% of county budget.
But this also doesn't include Lakeside.
It does not, it does not.
Makes it worse.
So, it does not.
So, this is, okay.
It does not. You're absolutely right. So, add to it. So, based on the three that this, this report does talk about, which is incorporated town of Easton, which was asked, and then asked for countywide of all, I asked for incorporated town of Easton. It says that, uh, "The Talbot County Public School Leadership Team has significant concerns surrounding the approval and impact of the referred developments that may have our school, that, that may have our school infrastructure. The study references a very aggressive build-out of all three projects that you alluded to to be completed by 2027, which contributes to the aggravated, aggravated impact of the project." So, um, and it, it, it goes on to talk about maybe some measured approach to, um, to mitigate some of the impact onto our school system, whether some of these projects can be delayed, or some of these projects can be, I guess, delayed would be only what I would, I would use. But I, I raise these concerns because they're concerns that I have, and they're genuine concerns. I mean, the same concerns that we read from 2007 from Mayor Willie are still present today, are still there. But yet then, this council, or, well, the town council has chosen to ignore those because that corridor is steadily being built, being built upon. I haven't seen any improvements on Matthews Town Road as far as widening it. There is no east-west connector, there are no overpasses that have been built. So, the, these are concerns that don't, that don't, doesn't mean that, um, look, I mean, we, we went into a negotiation with the town of Trap dealing with Lakeside, and one of the outcomes of that negotiation was split zoning that, that parcel. Half, half went into S1, W1, half stayed in S2, W2, to allow the county some time, um, to mitigate, to get things in place. And that's all we're asking our municipalities to do, is to work with us so that we can make the adjustments that we need to make to our schools, to our surrounding roads. Again, Black Dog Alley is a county road, we have to pay for that. And so, it, it just, I have concern that these developments, whether they're done in town or not, Mr. Villio, doesn't matter. They still impact the overall operation of Talbot County Government. It can be done in Cordova, or done in Y Mills, or done in Easton, or done in, in Trap. They still impact the entire, uh, operation of Talbot County Government. So, um, these are the concerns that I have around this. I went back and looked at the transcript from '07, because it's the same problem. Look, this is deja vu, I'm, I'm back here again, you know, 15 years later, talking about the same, same parcel and the same issues, and that is impacting on Matthews Town Road of, of development. I'm concerned about it, and I just want to make my concerns known that nothing is, as, as stated here in, in this, in this, uh, this transcript. We have the same issues today that we have five years ago on Matthews Town Road.
Where is the letter from Mayor Willie? Because I'm looking at this one from May 9th where he says he's...
Go to page 80, go to page 82 of the transcript.
I'm looking at May, the letter from May 9th where he's in favor. What was the letter dated that you have?
This wasn't, this is a transcript. If you go look at the email, and go back and look at the transcript, page 82.
Transcript from what meeting?
This is 2007.
2007, okay, so, since 2007, I'm referencing a letter now from May 9th, where this letter is being provided to confirm the town's support for the requested amendment.
Yeah, the town did, the mayor vetoed it. Yeah, the mayor vetoed it. Yeah, the council did support it, the mayor vetoed it.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to, to address those concerns for you.
Well, I don't, I don't think you can. I mean, I'm, I'm just, these are my concerns. I don't, I'm not asking for them to be addressed. These are, these are my concerns, and may not be yours. I mean, when it comes to Matthews Town Road, this is the same problem that existed in 2007, it still exists today.
Well, since, since 2007, Matthews Town Road has changed. It has been wide.
It has not been widened, there has been no...
It has been wide.
There has been a, a, a turn lane added, turn lane, but it hasn't been widened.
Okay. So, as far as the schools go, all right.
Mr. Villio, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to become better, I'm not, with all, with all, with all, with all due respect, with all due respect, these are my concerns.
Exactly.
I'm not, I'm not asking for anyone to address them here tonight, other than the town. I'm not here to argue about them. These are just my concerns.
I'm not arguing with you, but I'm, I'm letting you know what, when I hear your concerns, I have some of the similar concerns that you do as well.
Okay.
We don't have enough classrooms in this community right now for the student base that we have. In 2007, since that time, we're very fortunate, since Peter and Paul has built out a beautiful school. We're also very fortunate that the country school has done a wonderful expansion. When I'm thinking about the growth in this community, my children are still in these schools and are going to be staying in public schools, unless they do something real stupid, uh, school-wise. Now, this is where the, I see the growth happening on Matthews Town Road. I, I don't like growth particularly, you know? If, if we can lock it down, that'd be fantastic. God, my property values would go through the roof. If we didn't build another house, all of us in here would be millionaires. All of our homes would be going way up. Affordable housing would be done. It, it would be great for us, horrible for my children. And so, when I think about where my kids go to school, I live up past Hog Neck Golf Course. They go to Chapel District Elementary School and Easton Middle School. Easton Middle School's packed, Easton High School's packed. Chapel District is the next school to be renovated. So, I'm, I'm feel a little bit of a pressure to get lots recorded, especially on that side of town where the kids would be likely to go to that school, so that that way, we're able to finish the study that we're doing on impact fees, because impact fees are going to go up. There is absolutely no doubt about that. With the growth that's coming, we have to make additions to the community. We're thankful that we're building around a fire department, which I think is great, opposed to having to move fire departments. And we're also adding an ambulance bay up to that north side of the community, which, again, is more safety. I, I grew up on Black Dog Alley, picking up trash in the ditch and watching cars run in that ditch over and over again. Made the grass easier for me cut when the cars were sitting there, and I appreciate it. But it's not, it wasn't safe. We've made great improvements to that road. When Warren was sitting in here, and he said, "That's a main highway where trucks are going, carrying cars to Preston Ford, which are heavy." I said, "Fix the road, Warren. You, you can't change, uh, you can't change ways, we can't change Google Maps. We're stuck with it. We have infrastructure to provide, we've done it. We've made some great improvements up there. My poor mom lives up on Willow Road just past Black Dog Alley. I travel that road all the time. I'm extremely familiar with the traffic on that road. I expect the speed limit's going to have to slow down, and that's the way that town is growing. And I'm happy for that, because that's not where the bay is, it's not where the Tuckahoe is. It's farmland, right in the center of town, like I said earlier, where people aren't building trash like Guinea Ridge. How many more Guinea ridges do we need to see keep popping up? Those lots are for sale, those houses are going up on Matthews Town Road, if you're not familiar with it. It's just farther out of town. I don't like seeing a whole bunch of Guinea ridges. I'm happy that farmers, and I, or I understand that farmers have to sell a little bit of land every now and then, some family, deed it all, things like that. But I don't like seeing that over and over again. It messes up flight patterns for birds, uh, it makes hunting more difficult. I appreciate building within the towns. 21 years ago, this was set up and planned for this to go. Since that time, like I said, we've developed, we've expanded our big private schools. We have not done the public school. And I firmly believe that we're going to end up with another school being built in this community within the next 10 to 20 years. I'd love to see it up there. I think it would be a fantastic fit. I grew up in South Beachwood also, which we had a church and a baseball field right there. It was fantastic. We all loved playing between Beachwood, South Beachwood, and Hank Corbin's neighborhood. We could all, always get a team together. If you could picture a middle school right there in that community with all of those peers, limiting traffic, that the buses have to travel, better fields, it's a wonderful spot for that. Easton Utilities is, is all set up, or, or the wastewater treatment facility is more than prepared to handle this style growth. And what, I'd like for, at some point, the town to come up here and correct me too with this. But thi- this was initially planned for some 300-some homes, and you've made a lot of accommodations to reduce things over the years, to make this fit in. And I appreciate that. Everybody forgets about that. It is at the la, it's the last vote that counts, right? That's all anybody thinks about. Nobody pays attention to all the work that has been done over the time, even with small little amendments that we have to fix. So, I'm, I would never let something hang up with me when, when I'm looking at future planning and saying, "We, we don't have the money for future growth." Well, what, what should, should we tell the builder? "Okay, you want to come to us? Go ahead and build us a school. We don't have any kids, you know, guess 20 kids per classroom. See how many kids you can fit in there, and just give us money for a school." That's not how it works. We're doing an impact study, we need the lots recorded so that we can do a proper impact study, and then know what to increase those fees to be. I have no faith in the state highway administration jumping up and saying, "Hey, we want to help with this project with congestion in the roads." That's never going to happen. But what you will see is most likely speeds reduced and proper growth away from the waters, still in the town centers, and surrounded by similar construction. Big argument that I also hear is this isn't affordable, it's not cheap housing. Well, you know, unfortunately, I, I am the chairman and on the board for the Neighborhood Service Center, and we work very hard to get people out of poverty... Service Center, and we work very hard to get people out of poverty by helping them step up. And that's what Matthewstown Road is, when you look at it. We have plenty of growth from businesses all around that area, all around Walmart, the industrial park on the other side of Dover Road. Everybody's hiring, everyone's looking for employees. This is a perfect opportunity, start right by Chop Tank, where you can rent an apartment, walk to Walmart, walk to Giant, get your groceries, save up, get a deposit, buy a house in Golton, a split foyer home, a starter home, let it appreciate. You know, maybe the next council will come in and shut down growth, and you, again, will be one of the richest homeowners in Talbot County. Or let the home appreciate, sell it, move over across the road to Matthewstown Run, and then move up to this, and then move all the way up to High Banks and have your house out on the water, which I'm not that big of a fan of High Banks out there. We, we have seen consistently, or we just recently had to reduce, increase the fees for storm, for sewer down in Tillman. We know that it's very expensive to build these neighborhoods outside of the municipality. We know that we don't want to see big booming neighborhoods coming in. So here's what we have. We have a neighborhood that was projected, that was reduced in size to fit. There were hearings upon hearings upon hearings after this was set to be built back in two thousand, or this was annexed back in two thousand and one, 21 years ago. I don't see what's wrong with this. Uh, it, it seems like smart, planned growth, and I appreciate the parks that are in there. Chapel East, where I just was recently living, we had a wonderful park in the middle of the neighborhood, and it was great for the kids to congregate together. What this park will be doing is pulling kids from multiple part, neighborhoods, introducing more kids, socializing the kids that are going to be attending the schools together. I, I don't see a negative environmental impact. I, I do see an impact to cars, but, and tra- transportation. I know the town has worked very hard to add sidewalks and walking paths, somewhat reduce that as much as they can. But at the end of the day, congestion comes where people live. And people live in town centers here, thankfully, because we're not overdeveloping and adding, like the Ryan Home neighborhood out by Pickering Creek, you know, these little McMansions that popped up out there. I don't, I don't like those neighborhoods popping up all over the place. I like our growth in our town centers, while as I like supporting our town. So I, I can, I appreciate every one of your concerns, Mr. Pack. It's the exact same things I think about. Traffic safety is first thing I think about and all I deal with all day long before I come here and when I'm sitting up here, something that I demand out of the traffic safety committees and every time that we meet with those individuals. I, I totally get it. It, it's never going to be perfect, but it's a lot better than, again, building a bunch of neighborhoods in different areas, which you have to have, because we're built on, our tax basis is based off of growth. I, I prefer to see it, I, I prefer to see it here on Matthewstown Road, together, close like this, again, not a whole bunch of little Guinea ridges popping up. Yeah, Ms. Price?
Um, I think as far as location goes, I don't disagree, you know, with that, that it needs to be there. But when you said, like, maybe the developers should build us a school, maybe they should, you know, and you mentioned that we're going to be, you know, putting another public safety center out there, we are, costs money. And I don't think whatever happens to impact fees is going to begin to cover the ongoing costs. I mean, because, like you said, the schools are full. Doesn't matter really what, uh, country school did, or what St. Peter and Paul did, because you've got to have the money to go to a private school. We don't have the, the, you know, the, it's the construction costs on public schools, but it's ongoing pupils as well, at what we're paying twelve to fourteen thousand dollars per kid from the county. The county funds seventy-seven percent of the, of the, um, of the school's budget versus the state. It is over half of our budget. So you've got the school construction costs, you've got the ongoing per pupil costs on top of, you know, with schools, you know, we can't do anything about Kerwin, but that cost per pupil is going to double over the next ten to fifteen years. An impact study needs to be done. Impact fees need to go up. But it is not anywhere going to near cover all of these, um, all of these projects and the increase in population. If we're talking about, if we put them all together, the Poplar Farm, th- this one, and Trap, you're talking about adding thirty-five hundred homes, just say two people per, that's seven thousand people to add to our population of thirty-seven thousand, adding thirty percent? That starts to be like, then we're not Talbot County anymore, and the cost. And I think at the last meeting, you know, we've obviously talked about it a lot with, with, with Lakeside, but the last meeting, I guess when we introduced this, or when we had the public hearing on this one, and, um, we're talking about the property tax, the revenue cap. Okay, we have an extra penny now, which, you know, gives us another seven hundred or eight hundred thousand dollars, but we don't get the increase. Town does. Town gets all the increase in the, in the property tax that these homes bring, helps their budget, they don't have to pay for the schools. They don't, I mean, yes, they have to pay for some of the public safety and officers, of course, in the town of Easton, but they don't have the, the school costs. And we don't get that increased property tax because of the revenue cap. You know, maybe the public will start to understand that, you know, look, I'm a conservative. I don't want increases in taxes either. But if this is going to happen, then they're going to have to go up, and that's what people need to think about. And so when a municipality just decides that they're going to annex something that's 10 times bigger than their own town, like in Trap, or that they're going to do this, it doesn't mean that the growth isn't in the right place. It's like, who's going to pay for it? And that's the problem. And if you think of a project just in a vacuum, you know, I had a conversation today, you know, this one by itself, still like Mr. Pack pointed out, two hundred and fifty, plus the apartment buildings at however many that is, a hundred and twenty or so, here's still about three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty new, uh, properties on a road, as he quoted, and I appreciate the fact that you brought that out, that, you know, what Mayor Willie's quote was 15 years ago. Nothing's happened, traffic's only gotten worse, both east, west, north, north, south.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? Where are the apartments?
That was in, that was in one of those slides.
And the rest, are we voting to, are there apartments in this project?
No, but I'm just saying, you can't look at one project in a vacuum. You have to think more globally about how all of it impacts, because if the municipalities, you know, continue to grow, I'm not saying it's not in the right place, yes, if there's going to be growth, that's where I want it too. But they're not thinking about the county impact, and it's frustrating. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of new homes, and the infrastructure that it costs to the county, I don't care what you raise impact fees to. If you raise them to the point that it's going to cover the ongoing costs, then it's going to be a seven hundred thousand dollar house. You're going to double the price of the house. And I don't know how to address that. The next council's going to have to get serious about doing that. I don't know if it's some state legislation fixing that annexation law that was never intended to, you know, I don't think to grow, uh, a municipality by 10 times. So our job up here is to think about the entire impact, the entire county. You know, when people talked about Trap, and you had people from other sides of, other parts of the county, it wasn't just, it wasn't just, you know, the, uh, environmental concern there. It's about the total impact on the county. At least that's the way I looked at it. And we have got to figure out a way that the developers, you know, look, I was a former business owner for 20 years, right? And yes, I'm a capitalist. But the developers have to think about that. Maybe they should be putting several million dollars towards a new wing on a school. Or, you know, I guess when Trap came into existence, they promised to fund the police department, and they got, then they got the votes, because they promised to fund the police department. Maybe those types of things need to happen as goodwill gestures, so that, yes, we want them to make a profit, but we don't want them to do it on the backs of thirty-eight thousand taxpayers in Talbot County. And it's just not fair.
So I'm, I'm not the numbers person that you are. Fill me in on how an individual, a, a, a person that wants to build 200 single-family homes in one neighborhood should build a new school for the community.
They all need to chip in. I mean, we talked about the last time.
How would you calculate that formula? What would you?
I don't know. If we take the, all of the developments that are being proposed at this time, you figure out what that cost is going to be. Like I said, we just said Eastern schools are full.
That's the impact fee study that we're doing.
It's not going to be enough, because right now it's fifteen thousand dollars per house. And when you, we did the math, because we split it somewhere around fifty-fifty or sixty-forty or whatever with the towns on the impact fees, and we did the math last time, and it was like, you know, a million bucks. A million bucks isn't going to go far towards a school. I'm just saying, it needs to be awareness, and people need to be cognizant, and, um...
So how would you? I don't, I don't understand your argument. And, and maybe it's just the mathematics that I'm, I'm not quite getting.
All of these costs are on the citizens' backs.
I mean, we're not, not, I don't think any of us want to put a moratorium on building houses in Talbot County.
No, so the people who are building them, or the people who are living in them.
Should be forced to build a school, a fire truck and a ambulance?
Why not? They're adding all these hundreds of homes, and you figure out what that cost is. I'm not saying a hundred percent of it, but there needs to be a better proportion that I don't think you can ever resolve with impact fees, because, for example, the schools and the public safety are ongoing operating expenses every year. You have the initial construction of a school, right? You said you just wanted to see a whole new school. Who is going to pay for that at 50 million dollars?
I said, I fully expect that we will.
Right, and there's fifty, the last school we built was 50 million dollars. And how much that adds to the debt service and what we have to do to property taxes to pay for it?
And that's why we borrow the money over time to do it, as well as get money from the state to do it as well.
So when you borrow money over time, you know how much the interest is compared to what, you know, Angela, I don't know.
I just don't understand your, your mentality of saying no to this project, because they won't build you a new school.
It's not about this, this developer.
It is this project. This is, the town of Easton has come to us and said, 21 years ago, we brought this into the town limits, we've been having hearings for over a year, right on this? You've made accommodations, you've reduced the size after having hearings, and then we're going to say, okay, we'll go forward with this if you build us a school. We, we need 50 years.
I'm not asking them to build an entire school. I'm trying to bring awareness. I've got what.
Well, yes, we're all aware of the situation, but we can't say no to 200 homes in this neighborhood, because they won't.
Okay, so, so again, when you approve things in a vacuum, 200 homes here and 400 homes there, and 2,000 homes someplace else, it all adds up. And I think people are just looking at the bite-sized piece and that one thing, okay, that one thing fits, but when you put all those puzzle pieces together, we've got a problem here, and people need to start thinking about that.
Mr. Smith, would you mind coming up, please? I, I've gone through and said quite a bit, and, um, I'm not sure if it's all clear as, as I've said, but I, I'd like to hear from you, and I'd also like to hear from a couple members of the town, because, again, you guys have been listening to the public talk for, how long have you been hearing the public talk?
Let me just ask one more thing before.
Hold, hold on, hold on. Wait, 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 hold on, Ms. Price, hold on. Well, I'm not going to do that yet, hold on.
Okay, um, Mr. Lesser, if, I, you haven't talked, and I want to give you an opportunity to talk, or would you rather them speak a little bit, and then you talk?
You're from the developer in the town.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms.
Yep.
So I was just going to say, since the, the cost of the schools is 100% on the county, and the towns are going to get that increased revenue on property taxes, maybe there could be a conversation about maybe that the town itself helping pay for the schools or school construction. It doesn't ever happen. So they get the increased revenues, and we really don't.
I thought I paid a tax bill when I lived in the town and county.
Doesn't go towards schools.
The county tax?
The, yeah, but we can't increase those because of the revenue cap. It's very minute, what goes up with the property tax, yet the towns capture that increased property tax. Maybe some of that should start being earmarked to help pay for the schools.
Okay, let's give Mr. Smith opportunity to talk and, and get us steered in the right direction. How about that?
Thank you, council. For the record, Zach Smith, on behalf of D.R. Horton, the applicant for the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, that's before your, okay. First of all, I'd just like to say, for Ms. Price, all-town residents. I think what you're just talking about tonight, precisely the reason why the county long ago adopted development impact. We determined the cost of impacts for new development through the preparation of a scientific study done by professionals that determine the proportionality that you're talking about, the impact that new development, a new single-family home will have on the county, in terms of many aspects, transportation, pools, among. Now, that is the appropriate fee based on a scientific study for new development to pay. And I hear you, maybe that needs to be reevaluated and looked at, but I would submit to you that that shouldn't be an ad hoc decision by the county council as to what's the right number. It should be based on a scientific study. You know, that precedent is set by the Supreme Court that says, actions whose zoning processes must be roughly proportional to the impact. And that is why jurisdictions like the county require a scientific study to base the development impact. So I don't think it's inappropriate for the county to reevaluate it, have, engage your consultant, have them look at it, determine what impact new development will have, and that's an appropriate, evidence-based, defensible fee for the county. Maybe it'll go down, maybe it'll go up. I suspect it will go up, but only, I think, after that study's been done, can you have that evidence-based determination. I would say that even though this project hopefully will move forward, start development, development impact fees to the county are building permit issuance. They will pay whatever fee is in place at that time. So if, between now and end of the year, whenever, the county reevaluates its impact fees, and through that scientific study determines that a higher fee is appropriate, then this developer, other developers of the communities you're talking about, will be subject to that higher fee, and will pay that higher fee. And then moving forward, once those homes are built, those residents will be county taxpayers, help fund the services that we all share. And, you know, if those fees are inadequate, that's clearly a policy that's by the council at that time, and the citizenry of this county as to what we have to do to make these new residents. I would also say, there's nothing to say that these are all going to be new people moving into our county. I think, you know, I have children that I hope one day, if they want to, will live in this county, and I know the council does too. And so these are opportunities for folks in our community to move up, to have another house, to sell home, next generation. But I wouldn't get lost in that this is just going to be all new people flocking to our county. Also wanted to touch on traffic, tax point, who I have shown this respect for. Respectfully, I would say, a lot has changed since 2007. One point of clarification, that project on Aspire Outdoors, nothing has ever been approved, never been submitted there. There may be a plan at some point in the future that will emerge, some sort of development. That was not factored into the traffic impact study, because nothing's ever been presented, nothing's ever been approved by the town. Those units obviously aren't factored in.
True, and I, and I'm, thank you for your clarification on that. But since that's already S one W one, there's no need for the town to come to the county, county council, threatening changes in the comprehensive water and sewer plan. They can just go ahead and do that. And the reason why I want to be transparent and above board with that, because that's another 120 units that are going to be impacting Matthewstown Road. You're absolutely right, that's nothing to do with this project, but it does have to do with the overall impact to county services.
Correct, but it is the case that the town, through its own policy, will require a traffic impact study when that project comes in, if that project comes in, which will have to factor in, among other things, this development. And, you know, whatever the findings are of that study, that is what the town will require the developer to implement and pay for. Who knows what those traffic requirements may be, but that's yet to be determined. I would say, there have been significant improvements, in my, my mind, through 328 corridor, since that 2007 veto, new traffic light at Black Dog Alley in 328, we have a new traffic light at Fisher Range Road in 328, there have been significant widening and enhancements in 50 and 328, both sides. Black Dog Alley has been widened, there have been a number of improvements. The town is marching along towards that east-west connector road, East Side Collector, those are all built incrementally as projects come in, all in accordance with the town's comprehensive plan, which is obviously key, and I know this council hears and thinks highly of your comprehensive plan, as does the town. This project is, I submit to you, orderly planned growth in compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. That's not just my opinion. The town planning commission and the town council, through very public processes, have determined that determination, and that is why they've approved the project. Furthermore, your planning commission, Talbot County Planning Commission, determine that this amendment that we're requesting is consistent with the Talbot County comprehensive.
Sure.
This developer has come into this community, looked at the town's plan, county's plan, trying to follow exactly what those plans. Right? The town has not approved a major subdivision, I don't think in more than a decade. There has not been a tremendous amount of growth. The town has slowly been building out its inventory of available lots. Those lots are nearing exhaustion. And so it's logical for the town to look to the next piece of property in the town of Easton, right, infield. Rather than growing out, let's make sure the town is built out. And that's precisely what this project does. It builds out a parcel that has been in the town for two decades and that is shown in its plan as the next logical place for residential development. And of course, when you get residential development, there is going to be some level of impact on roads. There's gonna be some level of impact on schools. The only alternative is to say, nothing else happens, nothing. That is not reasonable. Obviously, we all want orderly, managed growth at an appropriate rate. I would submit to you, that's what this is. It follows the town's comprehensive plan. And the way to address those impacts, those reasonable and acceptable impacts for traffic, for schools and other things, through a development impact fee. Again, if you need to adjust those, process for that and certainly something.
Well, let, let me, uh, uh, thanks Zach. I, I would certainly agree with you that um, if not this council, the next needs to, as a first order of business, needs to look at uh, impact fees. Uh, and again, I'm, I'm reading over the transcript and I almost got a sense of deja vu because impact fees is what they were talking about back in two thousand and seven. And if I, if I may read, I'm reading from Resolution one forty-six, transcript on page eighty-one and, and line thirteen. The original project, Hunter's Mill, aveto, this is Mayor Willie, because five hundred plus homes. And then you are looking at maybe two and a half cars per hu- per house. That is putting a burden on a road that is already heavily traveled and has gotten worse. Matthews Town Road, gotten worse. This is two thousand and seven, mind you. So a couple of lights and a couple of shoulders turned in the turn lanes has not physically widened Matthews Town Road. It is, if you go back and measure it, it is the same width in two thousand and seven that it is today, the same width. But there has been more cars added to it since two thousand and seven. What he says here is that, that, that that's putting burden on a road that was, that is already heavily traveled and that has, that has only gotten worse. Since then, impact fees have, and it breaks off there. We've started collecting them, but there's nowhere near the amount needed to put this road in place, talking about the east-west connector. So all, all, all I'm saying to the town is that, look, the council heard these same arguments in two thousand and seven. And I think the county council then was ready to approve one, uh, 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 one forty-six, if not been for the objection of, of, of the mayor. And these, but these same issues are still here today that were there then. And all I'm asking is what's changed? I mean, it, it goes back to his, his earlier comment, what's changed? You're adding, you're still adding more growth to that same general area, those same, this is the same exact parcel. Go back and look. It's the same exact acreage. Matthews Town Run is the same exact road. Other than some lights, I give you, there, there has been some traffic lights, there has been some right turn lanes added from the shoulder. I, I'll give you that. I'll give you that. Not the same exact, I, I'll take that, I'll walk that back. I'll give you that. There have been some traffic modifications made to the roadway. You're right.
But it's not like it's a dual lane road or anything. The only thing I would say about impact fees, those are just one-time money that might help with some infrastructure to the road. It may help with the school construction. But it doesn't pay for the paramedics and EMTs and extra ambulances that we need to pay for every year. It doesn't pay for the additional pupils every year. There's no impact fee that's gonna cover that. And I'm not sure what the solution is. But you know, it, the, the impact fees are more for a one-time infrastructure thing and not for all the other additional expenses that are, that we have to pay for year after year after year. And what you need to remember, again, I'll say it one more time, on property taxes. Yeah, maybe you have more taxpayers paying, the rate goes down, right? We're collecting a thousand dollars or whatever, a hundred people paying ten bucks, right? And you have more people, now you've got a hundred and twenty people paying eight bucks. Because the, the rate goes down because of our revenue cap problem. So people end up, they're actually, their tax bill goes, actually can go down when you add more people into the system. That's a broken system that needs to be fixed. We don't get those additional revenues. The town does.
So I'm, I'm still confused. So on one hand, I hear Matthews Town Road needs improvements and on, and, and nothing's been done. And then on the other hand, I hear we've added traffic lights on Matthews Town Road to improve the traffic flow. And then on, on one hand, I hear we need to increase impact fees. And on the other hand, I hear we're doing a study to increase impact fees. I don't understand how that relates to these two hundred homes.
You have to think bigger picture, Frank. It's not just one thing at a time. If you do it piecemeal, all of a sudden you look at the whole picture and you straighten a mess.
Okay, so we should, so, so you're, you, you're for a moratorium until the, the study is done?
No, I'm asking for some monetary help from the town and the developer and not just the county. I don't know. We need to sit down and put it all on paper.
So how do you calculate that? I mean, what, what?
I think there'd be smart people, finance directors, people who could look at the cost of school.
You're the numbers person, Laura. You've been up here for a long time. You guys could have in- increased impact fees how many times? Over how many years? Has anything been, have you increased?
We haven't had a major proposed development like this in a very long time.
Mayor Willie was asking for those and I can't even get him to respond to me. The man's never responded to a single email in four years. I don't even know if he knows who I am.
I'm just trying to send a message out here while I'm still here for the next four or five months that this is a big deal.
Laura, we have, we have a developer asking to build two hundred lots within the town as the town has designed and, and has reduced from the original request. I, I don't understand y- your stance. You're not gonna let them go forward until you know how much it's gonna cost the county in future years. But we wouldn't even be able to calculate that until we know how many lots there are.
We know how many lots there are and.
No, we don't, because we're not, right now, these two hundred lots are not lots, right? They wouldn't be counted.
But, but we know how many they're asking for. And I'll also say that the town of Easton asks for an, an additional tax differential every year, which is absurd to me.
I get it, I get it. Mayor Willie, like I said.
They need to get, they need to give a bigger piece of the pie. They need to give a bigger piece of the pie and that's what I'm trying to project out here. That, you know, when the municipalities.
I think we all share your concerns, but we're not gonna solve any of those here tonight discussing.
But this is my opportunity to make sure.
No, that's public comment, Laura. State of the subject here. We, we are here to, to address if we're gonna allow the town.
I can talk about this now, public comment at the end, council comments is for something we didn't cover. We are in the middle of this conversation and I'm just trying to get, project that message out there that the municipalities and the developers need to do better by the county.
Okay, let's um, let's um, go, go ahead.
Could I, thank you. Just one, just Mr. Beck's comment. I just wanted to say, I, I respect you tremendously. Understand your points. I think a lot has changed. One, there's significantly fewer homes in the project back. There has been a traffic study. Go, forces and methods. Herman, an engineer, on state highway. And the county engineer did not participate. That's not typical of these circumstances. That, those agencies, state and the town, directed to developers, traffic engineers, how to do this stuff. Did that study, that study determined the only improvements that are necessary to maintain levels of service at A, all the studying intersections. Frontage improvement, long, property frontage, will be implemented. That's being done. Also, I would say the town has collected a significant amount of impact fees in two thousand and seven. It has its own projects, its own study, its own plan, its own program to implement traffic improvement. I would just hope, and, and lastly, I would say most importantly, Mayor Willie's still the mayor. This is a PUD project went through this process. I think it's telling that he didn't veto, he didn't make those comments that you're a little misconstrued. What he did is he submitted a letter to the council, kind of Eastern student-approved project, and fully, I mean, it's being. Changed the water and sewer plan. And at the end of the day, that's all that the county's being asked for.
Mm-hmm, true.
Because if you don't change your plan, the town can't provide public water, wastewater services. They have more than adequate capacity to serve this property. I think we would all agree fundamentally. Property should be served by public water and sewer, not residential development on septic systems out in hinterlands of the county. And that's all the town is trying to do, facilitate its plan, orderly growth, manageable growth at an acceptable rate. In order to do that, in order to serve these properties, needs the county to amend this, all were requested.
I, 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 I certainly understand that, Zach, and, and fully, fully understand that. And, uh, and look, you know, if, if, if we don't agree, agree to make the changes to comprehensive water and sewer plan, of course, the town can always appeal to MBE as, as St. Michael, as Trap did uh, ten plus years ago and, and get MBE to make the change at, at, at that, at that level. I mean, that's certainly within your right to do that. Um, is to have them go ahead and make it S one W one, um, based on length of time. Um, all I'm saying here today is that there are, are, I think, still legitimate concerns, the same concerns that, that had, and, and to your point, there have been some traffic calming uh, uh, additions on the Matthews Town Run Road. But when I look at the report from my, my school board and it's telling me, you know, that they have serious concerns, not just of this development, but of all the developments that are, that are projected on to take place within the town of Easton. As an elected official, that gives me pause. And I think I have to listen to my school board when it says you need to look at this and you need to consider a way to, as it said, measured, you know, to have a, a more measured build-out of development. A more measured, but now, if, if, if this stays at S, as S two W two, it just means that it's, it's when the, when the three to five range, it doesn't mean that it would never happen. It just won't happen within an immediate timeframe. It doesn't mean that it will never happen. Again, the concession that we made with the town of Trap, dealing with the Lakeside Project, was split zoning. So that we have some measured development uh, within that town limit so that the county could, could moderate its reaction to that growth. That's all. I mean, it's not saying that, no, we don't want any growth, we don't want any growth. It's not consistent with our comprehensive water and sewer plan. No one is saying that. It's saying that we have to sometimes work as partners to say, okay, I see what you want. Meet me halfway somewhere. Trap did that. And, and, and split zoning that. They met the county halfway in doing that project. So we're not saying, at least, I'm not, I'm not gonna say we, I'm not speaking for my other members. I'm saying, I'm not saying that, I've, I've never been anti-growth. You know, my record, the last fifteen years, I've never been anti-growth. You know, so what I'm saying is that the resources are limited. We have a hundred and twelve million dollar budget. When I started with this council fifteen years ago, you know what it was? Sixty-eight.
Mr. Lesser, as our representative on the school board, can you tell me about the growth of the student base over the last five years? Has it boomed, the student population in our public schools, or has it been rather?
We haven't had any development, so there hasn't really been, there hasn't been any.
We've expanded the St. Peter and Paul School and the country school. Homeschooling is becoming much more popular. I would like to know what, what's going on with our current stu- hey, if Lynn Thomas can go out of her way to write a letter back in December saying that she thinks that we should make sure that we're doing proper due diligence, which is all this is.
You can answer it for now, but I was the school board rep too, and I don't think, and I think Suzie's out there too. I don't think it's changed by more than a hundred kids. It just goes up and down with that same hundred kids. We haven't had anything significant, but with these developments, I think we will.
You think?
If you add thirty, if you add thirty-five hundred homes in Talbot County, I think you're gonna have more than a couple hundred more.
I don't know. What's our population age-wise?
Well, think if you, if you look at that, we, I, I don't know whether you guys have the whole report, but that's, that's.
No, nobody gives me anything here till I walk at four o'clock.
That's what the school board is saying, is that, is that, that, you know, based on their analysis, that it will have, it will have significant impact to the schools. And they, and they do give you a breakdown of that, um, of those relevant changes to the school population.
You gave me one page. I didn't get a breakdown of the student population growth. I would love to see that, because you, and Mrs. Bryce just alluded to the fact that it, it hasn't changed.
Because we haven't had any growth.
Any growth? We haven't added Cook's Hope? We haven't added Easton Village? We haven't added anything? I kind of beg to differ here. I think that you guys seem to paint some picture that all of a sudden Talbot County is gonna kick out our sixty-five-year-olds and become a boom, baby booming community.
I would also say the other problem when you add the senior population is they don't, they use all of our services and a lot of them don't pay income taxes because they might not be a full-year resident. So if they have residence.
But they're not filling our schools, so.
That's, that's not the, there's still an impact on everything else in the county.
You've only addressed the schools with your concerns for the impact.
No, I, absolutely not. I talked about public safety and EMTs and a whole nother station that we have to pay for every year. And you think with all of these, you don't think there's gonna be, need to be something else out for Trap? But the, the senior population does not contribute very much, uh, for the most part, on a consistent basis to the income tax base because they don't have jobs. They might buy or sell some, uh, some investments. Um, or they live six months in a day someplace else. So we don't really gain the additional with the people. If they're working class, yeah, we'll get some additional income tax revenue, that's a good thing. But to your point, if they're not having kids, school-aged kids, then maybe they are not contributing to the income tax base. So we're just stuck with.
We're not a cheap area to live. You have to pull an income to live here. If you're only here six months, you're, the odds of you breaking your hip every single year and having to go buy an ambulance ride is pretty low, thankfully. We're, we're pretty healthy folks here. I like the seniors here because they don't use a lot of the resources that are very expensive.
If you add to your population base, you need them to pay both property and income taxes.
Or not use a lot of the expensive services.
Okay, let's hold it up here. So um, Zach, let's, let's let um, your, your client.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's hear him a little bit. I wanna give you an opportunity.
But this is Jay Hallman with uh, D.R. Horton. I don't know if you have any specific.
No, but you know, um, I, I really, you know, respect what you guys are doing and you're providing, you know, a service for, um, for, for the town and the county. And you know, you're, you're hearing us. And ob- obviously, you know, you're in, in your crosshairs a little bit here. But, but you know, help us understand what your mindset is for us.
And stay close to the microphone. Some people from home are saying that they're not, you guys aren't close enough. They can't hear you all.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah. So in terms of what we're looking to do is simply provide affordable housing in the town of Easton. We understand that there's a housing shortage, um, and trying to fill that. In addition to that, we've offered the town significant affordable housing fees in lieu to make sure that we're trying to maximize what the town would like to see, to offer that first-time home buyer the opportunity to live in the town of Easton. Um, I understand, as an entitlements manager and land development manager for our company, I understand there's different municipalities that have different mindsets on growth. And all we're trying to do is, is figure out a way to work together to bring two hundred residents, two hundred opportunities for residents to live in the town.
That's great, good.
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead.
I've got, got a question. I, I haven't heard anything about uh, the, the price range, the projected price range for these, uh, these houses. I'm, I'm curious what your projected point, price point is.
So when we underwrote this project, we were between three forty and four ten, okay? And obviously, we've been dealing with this for over a year now in terms of the entitlements process. If you look at what the sales price would have been in February to now and the increase in interest rates, that, that cost has gone up, average home buyer about six hundred dollars in their payment. So our program that we were providing is offering a ability to drop down the interest rate when they go through our company as well as provide closing cost assistance. Unfortunately, even in the last six months, it, it's very hard to tell what our sales price is gonna be projected a year from now. Um, we were anticipated or slated to probably hopefully start this project in October of this year. Due to the, the length of the entitlements process, we're, we're most likely not even gonna get to the point of having full engineered plans till March of next year, which then pushes out our LD timeframe by another six to eight months. So it's very hard to sit here and tell you this is exactly what the sales price would be. Um, obviously, in that timeframe, should the market twist and change and LD costs come down, building material costs come down, obviously, we're, we're America's affordable builder, so that is what we pride ourselves on. Um, and that's what we shoot for in every development.
Yeah, and clearly, this is a dynamic market.
Absolutely.
We're all, we're all aware, well aware of what's, what's happening in the, in the housing market now. Uh, Easton, Easton, of course, has, has long had a wor- uh, an affordable workforce housing program. It's directed at those who are earning between eighty and a hundred percent of Easton's median income, which is now sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That eighty to a hundred and ten percent figure puts us for a household income somewhere just north of forty-nine thousand to just north of sixty-seven thousand. With the assistance that you're able to provide, um, how many of those homes do, will be priced for for families that, uh, that are in the range that Easton defines as affordable workforce housing?
So at the minimum, we're required to, per the county and council and the commission, we agreed that we'd focus on ten percent of the homes. But we are offering our assistance program to anybody that's a, um, what we call Main Street stars. So your teachers, uh, first responders, police officers, so on and so forth, that, um, would qualify. And you're looking at probably an in, income salary between about fifty to eighty thousand dollars that would qualify. And you're looking at probably an in, income salary between about fifty to eighty thousand dollars that would qualify for that program.
And that, so, so at least some of the houses in, in this development will be affordable for those in that, in, in that range, that fifty to eighty thousand dollar range.
The request was a minimum of ten percent, and we said we would absolutely do that ten percent, but we'll offer it to anybody that fits the criteria. So, we could be above ten percent as well.
And, and that is, that is in addition to the, the payment in lieu? The, the, the-
The fee in lieu is, the fee in lieu is for every single permit that we pull. So, it's a total of six hundred thousand that we'll be paying to the town for affordable housing to be used elsewhere.
But, but regardless of that fee in lieu, ten, at least ten percent of these houses will be made affordable in that, that slightly enlarged income range.
Correct, but we're not, we're not limiting ourselves.
If it's three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, ten percent of the houses will be what price range? Ballpark?
Well, it's a program that we offer. So, we would be offering to buy down the interest rate as well as supply money, down payment assistance. So, we'd be closing cost assistance.
Even with that help, you think someone making fifty thousand dollars could afford a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home?
When we underwrote this, yes. And when, again, it all depends on when we get to the point where we're actually building homes.
And these are single-family homes, so you would assume it'd be two people earning the income to pay for it, and if they have twenty percent down from their Carleton home that they, or their South Clifton home, or wherever in town, home that they sold for profit, yeah, sounds like a good deal.
And I mean, you also have FHA, you have other opportunities to buy as opposed to twenty percent down.
Have you built a, a two-hundred-home neighborhood before?
Yes.
Have you been required to build a school before you built those homes?
No.
And, and that, that commitment to this, to this affordability for a minimum of ten percent of the units in this, this is hard-wired into the Developers Rights and Responsibilities Agreement with the town?
Correct. And again, we, we do this and we'll, we offer opportunities like this for anybody that's a first, first responder, teachers. It's something that we kind of lean on as, as America's affordable builder, to offer that to, for people to be able to afford houses. Our goal is to find ways to get them into their home. Just like Frank said earlier, you know, it takes that first step to be able to get person more wealth. And, you know, if we can help that in our community.
So, wasn't there something like this in Easton Village, and I think you were probably on the council at the time, where there was supposed to be a certain percentage of Easton Village, and they couldn't, that didn't happen. So, they ended up paying more fee in lieu, which didn't really end up creating an additional market for, for more houses in that particular subdivision? Ten years ago or so?
Correct.
So, so, so the developer couldn't, they had the best of intentions, and I applaud you for that. But then it didn't happen in that particular instance, if I, from my memory is correct.
Elm, Elm Street, Elm Street, Elm Street's request with that particular development went to the town because of their proposed or projected HOA fee. They thought that those might make the homes unaffordable, and so they, they proposed this, this fee in lieu, which introduced that new model of, if you will, the camel's nose in the tent, rather than the hard, hard and fast requirement of ten percent.
Right, so then you don't end up with the additional homes.
Well, what I'm hearing here is that actually, we, we do have that commitment. It's for a, a wider, a higher ceiling with the income range. Not a wildly higher ceiling, but a higher ceiling. But it is, it is hardwired for, required for ten percent of those, those units within, within this, and so.
And this council also recognized that this is not a cheap community to live in, but we want our employees to live here. So, we've actually set money aside for employees to help with down payments on homes because we all recognize that this is just unfortunately not a cheap place to live, but a place where we need them to live.
Right, right.
We appreciate you stepping up to do that.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that. And, you know, we, we all have to understand too, and what we're up against in the last three to five years, definitely last couple of years, but with the way things, if we would backtrack a couple, three years, you, you wouldn't be telling us three forty to four hundred, you'd be telling us three hundred to three fifty. That, that's what you'd be telling us. So, you know, I, I sympathize with, with how you're structuring it and getting into, trying to get into the price range of, you know, the average person, middle class, that's doing fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. But, you know, I sort of look at the long term too. The longer we wait, the more it's gonna be for ten, for sixty, or for sixty to five hundred. So, it, it's, it's time-sensitive through the next ten years on a lot of things. And I would, I would agree, you know, I think, I think we've all had really great points up here. But our community needs, it needs, it needs places for bar department, the nurses, we have a hospital coming. You know, we need places for these people to live. And, and we're trying to provide a service and an opportunity for them to be here. So, you know, I really appreciate you guys being here, and I would like to give the opportunity of a couple more people come up here and weigh in on this, and, and if you guys are done.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Yep. Al, you want to come on up?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Al Silverstein. I represent Ward One, a member of the Easton Town Council. And I want to thank you for all of the deliberations that you've had tonight. I think our community has a lot of interesting challenges ahead of us. I think, like anything else, it's gonna take the county and the town working closer together on these issues to try to find common solutions. And I'm here tonight with my counterpart.
I'm Ron Engle. I'm the town council member representing Ward Three, and I'm glad you guys have given us an opportunity to talk tonight.
I just want to say that, you know, we, as well as you, as well as your planning commission, your other groups, this project went through a lot of scrutiny, a lot of discussion, a lot of negotiations. And as a council, it was a split vote, but we did approve it. Mayor Willie did not do what he did a number of years ago, which was veto it. We recognize that the challenges of the housing community and the issues that are surrounded. We know that, and I personally know, coming here in two thousand, I had a difficult time being able to find a place to live and had to rent for a year, and then had the opportunity to move into one of Hank Corbin's super homes and spent two and a half years there fixing it up. And as Mr. DiVillo talked about, we were able to sell it and make a profit and move around the corner into the new woods of Stony Ridge. And we did that two and a half years later and bought a town home in town, and it's an infill project. We're seeing, watching the real estate market, and we're seeing those homes that Hank Corbin built for fifty, seventy-five, hundred thousand dollars now sell for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those people are moving up into the next level of housing, the level of housing that's being proposed. So, we, we agree with a lot of the things you're saying, but we also know that we have to provide people with an opportunity to have a place to live and our companies that are here an opportunity to be able to get employees, and when they get them, to be able to at least have them have an opportunity to find a home in whatever price range is appropriate. So, I, I would encourage the council to approve this project. Thank you very much.
I would like to address some of the issues that you raised last week, and I also want to address some of Mrs. Price's things. I'm not gonna try to patronize you, but go over them, because I heard you say them. Number one, no question of the town's support for this project. You've heard from, you've got stuff from the mayor, town attorney's been here. Mr. Thomas has been here. You've got three county town councilmen here, all in support of this project. Went through everything we had to do. We went through our E S D R, we went through our planning and zoning, met all of the town comp plan things, met all of the county comp plan things, done everything you can possibly do by the law to do this and do it properly, and that's part of why we're here tonight. Now, the other issue, this particular thing is supposed to be about wastewater. And I find it kind of difficult for me talking to you about wastewater. We've got the finest wastewater system in, in the eastern shore. And you guys know that, and we're not even operating at fifty percent. We have, half our thing is filled with grass because we don't, we don't have the demand for it yet. So, there's no question that we can do this and do it really damn well. The big issue here among you, that you guys are raising, is there's a desperate need for housing. There is no housing available in Talbot County or in Easton, and you all know that. And, and I think Mr. DiVillo brought it up right. People need to be able to move new. We, we, if we put this group of housing in, that means some people that have houses that aren't as nice or as expensive that can move their way up, and then it moves stuff down to people lower, get more affordable housing. You raised these, Easton Village, Easton Village puts a very large amount of money that goes into our affordable housing. We decided not to build with it. What we have done is we take this money and help people who have, have been living in their homes for twenty and thirty years to fix them so they can continue to live there, and I think that's one of the finest programs in the country, and I don't think you can find a better one. And we use that money properly. So, I, I think that's where, where we are on that. Impact fees, we have professionals come in, we just changed our impact fees again, as, as Mr. Smith wrote up. We do it by the, by the law, bring scientific surveys and our, our impacts, we changed, we've changed them at least three times in seven years I've been a council member. And I, I think if you are proposing to hold this off so you can go and raise the impact fees, I think that's almost criminal. So, I, I think that you need to link, think about that a little bit. And also, let's talk about some things that we, you were talking about in impact fees. Let's do things. Eastern Volunteer Fire Department, forty percent, forty percent of the calls, the Eastern Volunteer Fire Department are in Talbot County. The community center, we provided sewer, water, all that stuff down there, and we will continue to do that. The new hospital, we're providing the water sewer for that. That's not ours. The emergency communication plan, when you want to do the top-notch communication plan, what do we do? We bought replica equipment, put it in the police department, moved the county communications to the, to the police department for over six months while you were able to professionally build your things so we could do it. That's all called teamwork and working together. We're talking impact fees here. And I say, we, we, this is, has been up until right now, been the high point of the cooperation between the town and the county. We've got, we've worked together to do Mistletoe Hall, that's spectacular. You guys put roadways up there, we put the infrastructure. As soon as the infrastructure, we're getting, we're getting inundated with, with things in there. Broadband, what about broadband? Eastern Utilities is providing your pro, your, with, they've got all of the funds, millions of dollars, so you will get broadband through the entire county. That's teamwork. But, but I want to go back to you again. We keep on talking about, where was the school board when you were doing your comp plan? No one's mentioned that, and now they're coming at the, at the valedictory moment saying, you can't do that because we don't have students? Come on. That's, that's not working. They should, they should be part of your comp plan, and they should, if they have issues, they ought to put it in there. My understanding is you can't build schools for any more students than what you have there. So, you, when you built that secondary school, built the school, it was full the day you opened it. That's not, that's not on the, on the town. You come to us because, and I've heard all of you speak this, that you depend on the towns to do the commerce for Talbot County so the Talbot, unincorporated Talbot County doesn't have to develop. When was the last time you had to develop in the county? And this, we'll go back to the, to this, with the issue of why, why this is here. When that annexation was done fifteen years ago, they should have changed the zoning for the, for the sewage. They didn't do it. That's a clarke. We wouldn't be here tonight if that had been done properly. So, and, and Mrs. Price, we didn't do this in a vacuum. I don't care what you just said. This was done properly, I've explained it. We did it by, by the law, we did it by our, our thing, and you guys, your planning department, all have agreed unanimously to do this thing. And so now, all of a sudden, we're, we're having to defend ourselves, and I don't think that's right.
I didn't say you did it in a vacuum. We can't vote on things in a, we should not look at things in a vacuum. We should look at them globally. I didn't say that you all-
We don't do things in a vacuum. The town is running well.
I didn't say you did.
Okay, we're just, but it came off that way. I'm sorry if I misinterpreted what you said. But here, that's where we are. And then finally, Matthews Town Road, yes, there have been improvements. Are they perfect? No. We have been meeting with the state highway administration on this thing. We have two things that they, there's gonna be, in Elliot Road, there's gonna be, big changes there, we're gonna be trying, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that the, that the state has agreed to do. Except, we have to wait for them to do it. We're also waiting for a traffic light on Route Fifty by the, by the new oil farms. There are things that are going on. And I think that we're, we're addressing all these things. So, I'm coming to you like Silverstein, we've, we've done our best, we've done our due diligence, we brought excellent project to you, the first P U D we've had in about fifteen years, and we, we did what we were supposed to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman.
Greg, would you like to come up? Would you? Yep.
Yep.
Since this does concern the wastewater-
Hey, could you, could you introduce yourself, please?
Again, need to address and everything. A small point, but concerning public debt. If the developer gets going out there, the E D U fees to waste, uh, these utilities, seven thousand fifty. So, little over one point four million of debt is retired. I confirmed this with Hugh Grundin yesterday, by this, by this development. There's, that's not the, the ongoing fees are different, hookup fees are different. But when the plant was built, the idea of paying for it was, I guess amongst other things, but especially the charge for the E D U fees of seven thousand fifty. And that's how much is, is gonna be offset.
It doesn't help the county's expenses, though. It helps the town and Easton Utilities. Doesn't help the county with our expenses.
I only say that from the standpoint of its public debt. Maybe the towns, counties, but that's why I make the point.
Okay, all right. Thanks a lot.
I really, I could talk on it all night, but I don't think there's anything that hadn't been covered. As far as the attributes to this thing, they've all been spoken.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Callahan, I need to make one clarification. I referenced this letter from December thirty-first and said it was by Lynn, and I may not have said the last name because I thought it was Lynn Duncan, but it was addressed to Lynn Thomas, the Easton Town Planner, by Kevin Schaefer, who's the plant, the facilities maintenance operator for the schools, not, not a planner. I wanted to make sure that was clear. It's not Lynn Duncan or Lynn Thomas that wrote it. It was Kevin Schaefer, who maintains Director of Operations of the schools. Sorry.
Okay, well, that's great. Okay, would, would anybody else like the opportunity to, to speak here?
Not a public area.
Yeah. Well, they've been getting up here, though. I want to make sure everybody is, is, is able to get what they want out because it is an important project for us and, and the town. So, um, yes, yes, come on up. Okay.
That was, um,
Okay.
And so, um,
I believe it was post- Public hearing- I believe it was post-public hearings are not...
Could you say who you are, please?
Heisha Hay. 8671 K Mac Street.
But for point of clarification, public notifications are not sent out to individuals. They're posted online.
That is true. But some people, some of us that work in this county may not have the notice that it was online and in the newspaper. Not all of us subscribe to the newspaper as well. However, the town of Easton did give us a courtesy and send us all out a letter. So since this development is 400 feet from my backyard, I would ask that this council consider having a public hearing and let the residents be able to speak in regards to this.
We had a public hearing which is posted by law in the newspaper three times in advance and online as well. That is what we do.
Still did not know about it, Ms. Price.
That's your responsibility.
That is yours unfortunately because the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission also had hearings on these as well unfortunately. I'm sorry. But there's no way that we have a system...
Well, the Planning Commission we went to for the town of Easton, but I'm here specifically to the county council because...
We had a county planning commission and a county public works.
I know that. I'm aware of that.
Let's not get into the weeds.
I'm aware of that. And I did attend the town meeting. But again, the same issues that have been raised by some of the council members concerning the school and the traffic is some of the concerns that I have and voiced to the Planning Commission as well last year. So I do think that the public should, their comments should be considered in regards to this project. That's what I'm saying. And your comments, 400 feet from my backyard, 200 houses, that is a concern to me. And my latest 16-year-old driver. So with all due respect, no. We would not like to see a development this large there. Because the town asked Hunter's Mill to be 50 houses 12, 13, 14, 15 years ago when Mr. Passon was developing, and they accommodated that. We have 50 homes in our development. And now we're adding over 200 and proposed 150 apartments. That is a lot of development.
Point of clarification, I'm sorry, but the apartments cannot be included. They have not even been applied for.
I understand that. But it's still out there in the community and being proposed. There is a plan. There was a feasibility study. So even if it hasn't been put forth as a site plan or been put forth to the town, it is still out there and I'm sure it will come online. So all I'm here to say is to give consideration to the residents that live there. Like I said, 400 feet from my backyard. And I understand it's a PUD. I understand that. But 200 homes is still a lot to our 50 units that we have right now where we're living. So ultimately, what's going to happen is we're going to sell our home and end up moving, basically. Years to come and generations to come. My kids cannot afford to buy a home here, Mr. Davilio. And affordable housing, there's one affordable home in our housing development of Hunter's Mill. And those houses started at $280,000. So someone making $40,000, $50,000 is not going to be able to afford a $350 home. You can do that math on your own. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council? Good pleasure. What's your wishes?
Well, you know, I was the one who requested this additional time to gather more background before we act on this application. I'm, and I'm glad I did. I did gather documents from town staff, and I want to thank town staff for being so responsive to that. I did speak with the property owner and appreciate his responsiveness. I did speak with one of the town council members and appreciate that. I'll be continuing that conversation, particularly as regards collaboration with affordable housing. And that's something that I think that is an increasing challenge in Talbot County. And I think that we do need jurisdictional cooperation in order to address it. I appreciate that there's some move toward that in this development. I suppose I wish the availability were a little bit more broad, but I'm grateful for what is there. I certainly have some disappointments about the town relaxing its design standards, but for this application resulting in all street-loaded units, that's, I think that was something that was not recommended by the town Planning Commission, but nevertheless was ultimately approved there. It's a disappointment, but in the end, what we're being asked for is is W1 and S1 eligibility to connect to Eastern Utilities' modern and very high-performing enhanced nutrient removal wastewater treatment plant. As we heard tonight in the testimony from the town councilman, it is the best performing wastewater treatment plant in the area. This designation, this project cannot be faulted for that request. So I'll leave it at that.
Any other council member like to speak? Are we...
A lot to, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Scottahan, a lot to digest. Thank Mrs. Hate for being here. So we had some citizen input, and you're right, you know, we do announce our public hearings online and in the paper. But thank her for being here just to give us a little bit of a taste of what the community may be thinking about this project. And I know some of you, if not all of you, have not seen the entire report from the school board. So in that vein, Mr. Callahan, I would ask that we just could set this aside for another session, another meeting just to allow this document to be circulated amongst all council members so you have a full understanding of what the school board's concerns are. And again, so that we can come back with, all of us have full knowledge of what their issues are. So I would just ask respectfully that we do allow more time for that to be circulated. I just got it this evening when I walked in. I made the request while I was out of town, as you know. So I had not read it completely myself.
Yeah.
I was just skimming it as I was coming in. I believe all of you do have the transcript from the Resolution 146 to go through yourself. So I think just allowing councils some additional week just to read those comments and read the report is appropriate. And again, my concerns are just my concerns, you know, and they're not meant to cast any bad light on anyone. But I will say to Councilman Ingles' response to that, you know, the county has worked, and I know when I came on as council some 15 years ago, there was a lot of animosity between the town and the county council. And we worked painstakingly when Mr. Hollis was here to make inroads, to meet for breakfast, to have those quarterly municipal and county meetings so that we can discuss these type of projects. So it won't be any surprises. It won't be something that council members are not aware of and could not take as due diligence in getting to know the facts of these projects. And you're right, Mistletoe Hall, we worked together with that. We did the road widening with that. Dealing with the broadband, this council paid over a million dollars for broadband. So it wasn't something that EUC did on its own. We use ARPA funds to pay into that broadband expansion. Over $1.5 million were from the county for that broadband expansion. The connection to the community center, the county paid the full freight for that. We didn't ask the town to give us a break on it. We paid every dime for that connection. So just to want it to be clear that it wasn't anything that the county was asking to be done. We paid for those road widens on Gold's Burnet. We paid for the broadband expansion into the county. And we paid for the connection of the community center into the town's wastewater treatment plant. So we do pay our freight. But what this has shown me in my last couple of months is there's still some more work to be done. I mean, these projects should not take council members by surprise. We should have those discussions on the full, on a full scale. I mean, the 120 homes which are already S1, W1, yeah, you don't have to come back for that. You can just go ahead and do it. And if 20 years ago or 15 years ago, if this was annexed in from A1 to S1, W1, you wouldn't be here now today. You would just do it. But the impact would still be what it is. The impact would still be what it is. So that's the point, that's the concern that I'm just trying to address. Let's work together to address the impact. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. Again, we did the same thing down with TRAP. We saw that there was going to be an impact. We sat down, we negotiated, and we worked it out together. That's all I am saying, is that if there are impacts, how can we address them so that the communities are satisfied? So that the county and the towns are satisfied with the end results. I've never been anti-growth in my life. You know that. And so don't misconstrue what I'm saying here. All I'm saying is that let's be smarter and let's be more cooperative in what we're doing. You know, to say that, hey, if this was S1, W1, we wouldn't even be here. But that's a true statement. But again, the impact is the impact.
So I would disagree with that because if it had been done years ago, there would be 500 homes being built out here. And they've reduced it down to 200.
Mr. Davilio, the only reason, the only reason that it was not changed in 2007 was Mayor Willie stood right there and vetoed it. The only reason. And he did so, if you read the transcript, was because of traffic concerns. He said it over and over again, because of traffic concerns. So you're absolutely right. The only thing that changed, because the county, the town council had voted to go forward. It was his veto because of traffic concerns.
We've been fortunate enough that they've addressed those traffic concerns, as Mr. Ingles said.
Okay.
We've added traffic lights. We've improved Black Dog Alley.
That's a county road.
You're right. Because again, we're working together, aren't we? 21 years ago, this was drawn into the map. 21 years ago, this was drawn into the map with 500 homes there. Been reduced down to 200.
No, it was just annexed in O1.
Yes.
Yeah, but not, but not, not...
I believe it was 531 initially designed to be there.
Okay. Again, I'm not going to go back and forth with that.
I appreciate Mr. Pax's comments back about the broadband and paying the full freight and things like that because, you know, a lot of the things that Councilman Ingles said really portrayed things a little bit differently. And I know this is slightly off topic, but I do want to say, this additional traffic light on Route 50, which you have heard us up here for over 10 years trying to talk to state highway about, there are too many lights. There's too much congestion through Easton to, you know, to get from point A to point B. The last thing I think we need is another traffic light. And the only reason I know about it is because Mr. Davilio mentioned it, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago. Where was the communication then? How come the town of Easton is not talking to us about asking for an additional, another traffic light on Route 50, which is just going to make the congestion even worse? Traffic lights do not ease traffic flow. They slow everybody down at different points. But the fact of the matter is those cars are on there, and we have now another one where people are going to stop going this way. And I had to hear about it as a side note from Mr. Davilio because Easton never told us. You're just working with them and you didn't tell the county about that? I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's, clearly, there is still more work to do. And maybe that was an example of y'all working in a vacuum because we should have known about it. I was blindsided when I heard about that. And every year when we do our priorities to the state highway, it's been the same thing for the last 12 years I've been here about Dover Road and Matthews Town Road and Chapel Road and all of those things and those traffic lights and the congestion problem through here. So I am horrified that there is a consideration of another traffic light to mess up that whole corridor right there. And I didn't know about it.
On behalf of myself only, I reached out to the town today and I received responses from Don Abellito, who was working, I believe, teaching, and called me during his lunch break, Al Silverstein, Ron Engel. Lynn Thomas sent me a fantastic, wonderful breakdown, an explanation of the year's worth of work through this. Could we have had this when we have the meeting with the towns? Sure, certainly. And that's what the meetings with the towns should be. I hold Mayor Willie 100% responsible for any lack of communication between the town and the county. He's not here tonight. He hasn't responded to any of my emails, as I've said. But when I reach out to Don Richardson, I get an immediate response. I can't... Four years, I've never had all you guys in one room like this, coming out because you're trying to add 200 homes in that you've been working on for years. I can't believe it takes this much effort for you to come out and support and for us to sit here and waver and talk about Route 50 traffic lights, builders being required to build schools, the lack of improvements which have been improved. I, I'm disgusted and disappointed. You know, any good work and good feelings that have been done are certainly in my mind would be lost if I had to leave this meeting after this tonight. I mean, we, Dan Watson, I guess, just gives everybody PTSD and scares the hell out of everybody because he just runs around like that annoying wife that just keeps bitching about a stove that, you know, they bought on sale and, you know, maybe I didn't want it. And 10 years later, I told you about this. We should have bought that stove. You cook on it every night and everybody loves it. And you've sold it to three of your friends because you got such a good deal on it and you do like it, you know? I truly believe some people just get terrified because of the outcome of just one individual that's just going to keep saying, "All of these guys keep building." Well, we're not. We're not doing that. This is the town of Easton saying, "We've been working on this project for years. We got the capacity. We got grass in our water, our sewer system. We're trying to use the best, we have the best sewer system we have. We're trying to add homes to it for people who are moving here." And you're looking at a county council that can't get their shit straight. I can't fathom why we're held up on, if this came up in the first year, I'm sure we'd have been fine.
Calm it down just a little bit.
All right, but I just...
I know you're passionate about it.
This is the most simplest request that you guys have. And I just...
I know you are. I know you are.
I just don't, I don't understand where we're stopped.
Okay, okay. All right. All right.
I've heard.
See what you've done?
I've heard, maybe.
See what you've done? All right, so, so, Mr. Pax?
Yes.
You'd feel a little bit more comfortable with a couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I...
But you can get there?
Yeah, we can circulate the report and let everybody read it and the transcripts.
And you feel like you just need that a little bit more to get where you need to be?
Absolutely, absolutely, Ms. Callahan. I certainly do.
Okay. Ms. Price, can you, do you need a few weeks too to get there? To get to the vote of yes?
Again, out of respect for somebody asking, which doesn't always happen. And out of respect for a council member asking that, for everybody to at least read that. But sure, I think that we need to read it. It's a new report that came in today. Now, I will say, we've been asking for quite some time for this to get us this, and we... I really, it would have been nice if we had had this in a more timely manner because we've been asking for it on multiple occasions and we didn't get it until the day we're supposed to vote. That's not great.
This letter was written December 31st, 2001. Are you talking about the school report?
I gave you my copy. It was just circulated to us today. And they're possibly 2001.
2021. Written by the Director of Operations.
Regardless of when it was drafted, we just got it today.
Maybe they should also update the letter and say if they still believe that.
Yeah, we just got the letter today. You're right. It is dated to Mr. Thomas from the town, but he doesn't work for us. He works for the town. We just got it today. So regardless, when it was drafted, we just got it today.
So the letter was not written to the county council?
It was written to Mr. Thomas.
Correct.
And it was not shared with us? Unfortunately. We had a public hearing. Shared it with us.
If we're not going to take action on this tonight, I respectfully ask that it be on the agenda for the 23rd. No, I mean the 23rd.
Of August?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. With that, Madam Secretary, is, is that open? Okay, okay. Well, let's, let's, let's leave it like this. I know it's, I know it's been a tough night. We've been dealing with this for the last hour and a half. Um, I, I do know that you're, you're a little disappointed out there, that we, we couldn't come to a conclusion. But I thi- I think it's important for all five of us up here to be on board. There's a couple of people that just need to settle in. Couple councils that, that aren't comfortable with it. And, um, we need to get them on board because we need a 5-0 vote up here because I.
Mr. Callahan, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. We are a five-member board that we should all have our own opinions based on our information. And I don't, I don't think it's right for you to say that we all need to be on board and this needs to be a 5-0. That's why you have five different councilmembers up here.
Okay, if you want to stop building, that's fine, okay? That's fine. But it would be nice if we had an opportunity to look at the information and all of us be on board, okay? So maybe we're not, you know? I'm just trying to, you, you know, you've got, you've got people out here, in the town out here, that have done 100% what they've asked for. And, and, and they've paid by the rules for the last couple of years. Um, Mr. Pax, Mr. Davilio, all of you have had great opportunities and great stuff to say tonight, okay? And I think in respect of, you know, holding, you know, this another month, not my thing, but I'm going to give Mr. Pax his wish.
He only wanted to hold it two weeks. He only wanted to hold it over for two weeks.
Well, you know what? Um, you know, I had another councilman here say the 23rd. So I, I respect both what they say, you know? Um, and if it, if it takes that to get them on board, that's fine. So, anyway, um, let's hold off until the 23rd and, um, let's all, it's all come back here, the 23rd, and, um, and, uh, vote on this. Thank you, appreciate it. Go, go ahead, Zach. Yeah, absolutely, come up here, yep.
Ultimately, your decision wasn't.
Yeah.
I would just say on behalf of my client, we would very much like a vote tonight. We don't want to force the wrong vote. Feel like we've done everything we're supposed to do. We've given you all the information that we were supposed to give you. Asked for an extension last meeting, wasn't an extension. We've had public hearings, many, many public hearings. Advertisements, direct notice to the, the public. This thing has been reviewed and scrutinized and vetted. Again, we don't want the wrong answer, but I think my client very much needs to move forward with this project. Ask council board, we would like to have a vote.
Well, Zach, respectfully, um, as I, as I just said, I, I've been away for the last week. Um, I had to ask, and, and I, if I remember, and Lynn, Lynn stepped away. When, when you and Ms. Van Br- Van Amburn was before us last meeting, was there a statement made that you had not received a re- a, a, a report from the school board regarding the project? And, and, and that's what's sticking in my mind and that, and that's what made me make the request while I was away to have the report sent to me. Um, and so, because I thought that the statement was made from her that you had not received anything from the school. You had requested it, but you had not received it, because it wasn't shared with us.
Right, um.
If you remember, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot.
I, I will not report to specifically remember what she said. I agree with you, I do remember the, the issue being raised at the, at the public hearing. Um, clearly, we asked for, uh, information on, um, the impact of, to the school system on not just this project, but the, uh, Elliott Road Apartments. And I, I think, um.
In the Poplar Hill.
I made Mr. Schaefer aware of the Poplar Hill and, uh, I think also, project that is, uh, currently proposed for Dutchman's Lane that is, would have no impact on the schools because it's 55 plus, but still, it's a development discussion. Um, and he did report back, um, I think it was after the council's decision, but obviously prior to this body's action. If it was misrepresented, I certainly, I don't think it was intentional. And on behalf of Ms. Van Amburn, I apologize if there's any confusion or.
Well, I just know that I, I didn't see the report until the day it was in my box when I walked in. Uh, Ms. Roberts told me that a reporter had come in and was sitting in my box. Um, so, I, again, I don't want you to put words in her mouth, not at all. Um, but I, it, from what I remember, that it wasn't a report, it was a report, it was reported from my memory that you had something from the school board, um, regarding the project. So, so, Mr. Smith, I, I certainly understand that. I'm just asking for, um, for a time to, for other members to see the report and digest it because we had not seen the report.
I, I understand, and again, that's the council's pleasure, but just from the applicant standpoint, if, we, we would like to request a vote, but at the end of the day, I understand.
Mr. Thomas, are, are, is it customary that the school provides you reports anytime that you build a new development? Is it, and what kind of information are you provided by the schools when you're asked for that?
The, the more typical, uh, process is once a year when they're doing their, uh, facilities master plan, uh, we, I get a phone call and/or have a meeting with, um, Mr. Schaefer or his predecessor or the consultant working, uh, for the school board and go over, uh, the general town, uh, demographics as well as things, projects such as this that might be in the pipeline. So that's really the only regular and official communication that we have. Um, if we have a relatively large project like this, uh, out of a courtesy, we will send a copy to them. In this particular occasion, it was requested by our town council, um, to send something to, uh, the school board to, um, consider the cumulative impact of these projects that were all in various stages and some of them still not yet, um, even to the planning commission, but, uh, fairly well-known in the community that they, uh, on the drawing boards.
Is it reasonable to think that we would get factual information from them estimating student counts? Do, how, what, what kind, what, what reason, what factual information would we receive out of the school board on that? That we would be able to apply to this to figure out if this would work with the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, it would, it would have no information relative to the impact on the wastewater treatment plant unless a more crowded school would have an impact on the wastewater treatment plant, um.
And would they provide, have they ever provided any information to say, yes, we want to see a neighbor, this neighborhood come, no, do not bring this neighborhood, provide an age restriction? What, what, what would I expect to receive from the school board?
So, my understanding is their, their analysis is more for their benefit to do forward planning and thinking about the likely impacts, um, of development on the school system.
So it'd make, it'd be more reasonable for us to provide them the information that we passed this and that 200 lots will be coming so that they could then use that analysis for their, their student body count opposed to us giving, requesting them to give us a study on whether or not this student body count in this neighborhood is feasible in their schools?
Yeah, I certainly think there are benefits to both, uh, sides of that. We certainly, any entity, whether it be the county or the town that approves certainly a major project out of, if nothing else, out of a courtesy, if not for effective planning for facilities should, um, share that information. And that's built into that annual review process. You know, it might make it a couple of months later than it actually is, but it assures that it happens, um, annually.
So it almost would be better for us to start having quarterly meetings with the towns and bring in interested players such as the schools, maybe the Ray Clarks, the county engineers, town engineers, so that we could have a whole conversation of the direction of the county's going with the comprehensive plan and play as, as the main document, which is what this neighborhood is included in and what we're basing our decisions off of. Would that be fair, fair to say that to improve communication, to bring in more interested parties like that?
I, I don't know. Mr. Thomas, I have, I have one question for you. Um, had, had you, had you seen the report back from the report that you requested regarding, um, this development of Mathews Town Run, the Elliott Road project and the, uh, Poplar Hill project? Had you received anything back from, from today going backwards? Have you received anything back from Mrs. Schaefer or the school on those, on, on your request?
Um, not in the way of a formal report, but in, in the form of, um, a letter or email.
Do you remember what that letter or email said regarding that, those developments?
Um, I, as I recall, it was just some general language about, you know, this will have significant impact or potentially have significant impact on the school system, but we can't really analyze that until we know more about the, uh, intended market of the housing, um, you know? A lot, a lot of Easton's housing, Talbot County's housing, I would presume is even more, uh, to this characteristic. Uh, when I met with the school board years ago, um, to go over an even larger project, I was astounded when the response was, well, this will have negligible impact on our school system. And I thought, how on earth can that be?
What is this that we're looking at that's dated December 13th to you that we don't know about?
Well, let me, let me follow up if I, if I may. I mean, you, you, you said that you received a, a letter and/or email from Mr. Schaefer regarding those three projects within the town limits. Had you seen the body of this report? Have you, have you seen the full report? You said you hadn't seen anything, so you haven't, so you yourself and the town have not seen the full report?
I can't speak for anyone else at the town, but I have not.
But you have not, okay. And your position with the town is?
The town planner.
You're the town planner? And you have not, to your not, have not seen the, the full school, school report?
This letter is addressed to you.
Okay.
Okay.
From seven months ago.
Okay, I'm ready to move, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I respectfully request that we wait. I mean, the town hasn't even seen the full report either. From, from Mr., according to Mr. Thomas, they have not even seen the full school report. So respectfully, I'm going to, Mr. Callahan, ask that we set this aside for, and, and, and pick it up later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to lay, you said the 23rd, you'll be.
Please.
Okay, all right, thank you. We're going to wait till the 23rd. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Huh? Um.
Oh.
Yeah, let's just keep rolling, yeah. Um, Mr. Stamp, you're up.
Good evening.
Hmm?
Okay, under county manager report, I have, uh, six items this evening. The first are board and committee appointments. The first one would be request the appointment of Rob Strabel to the Economic Development Commission as the town of St. Michael's representative.
Can we?
Okay.
Okay, got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
The next is a request for the appointment of Tim Cannon to the Emergency Services Advisory Board as a representative for the Cordova District.
Can we move?
Okay, we got a motion second to put, uh, Mr. Cannon on, on the board there. Call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
Next is a request for the appointment of Terry Satchel RN to the Emergency Services Advisory Board as a representative for the Easton District.
Can we move?
Second.
We got a motion second to put Terry Satchel on the board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
And just before moving off those appointments, just like to recognize the service of Lois McDonald, who is moving off from the Cordova District, and, uh, Mr. Wayne Diet. Mr. Wayne Diet, who's moving off, uh, long-serving members of the Emergency Services Advisory Board, and they certainly did a great job, so just want to recognize their service.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The next item we have, uh, Mr. Counsel, President, Members of the Council, um, Joanne, or Beth Ann Langrell from, for All Seasons. She was here earlier, but unfortunately, uh, because of child, childcare challenges, uh, she was not able to stay. But she is asked, uh, she's asking for your consideration for All Seasons. They're requesting a letter of support from the county council for their grant application to the Rural Maryland Council for FY23 Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Funding in the sum of $242,060 for their same-day access program. Uh, this would require no county funds.
Second. Got a motion second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
The next item I have, the County Roads Department is requesting council approval to purchase a 2022 Bow Mag Asphalt Roller from the low bidder, Mid-Atlantic Machinery in the amount of $55,233. There are sufficient funds in the FY23 budget and if approved, delivery is anticipated to be January of 2023.
Mr. Stamp, you can't say Bow Mag Asphalt Roller without running, so.
You're my best, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to buy one, a roller. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
Next item I have is the Department of Corrections is requesting council approval to use $125,000 in FY23 contingency funds to complete the purchase of two hot water heaters for the electric, from Electrical Automation Services, Inc. This project was approved and awarded in FY22. However, because of supply chain disruptions, the project could not be completed. The overall cost of the project was $225,000 with $125,000 remaining, which will allow for the completion of the project. The finance director has certified that there are sufficient contingency funds available for this purchase.
Can we move?
Second.
Got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
The next item I have, the Information Technology Department, uh, is requesting council approval to utilize an existing state of Maryland consulting and technical services contractor known as CATS Plus to provide enhanced security for core software services and to provide managed services in the amount of $179,958. Additionally, requesting council approval to piggyback on a state of Maryland contract with an approved vendor for associated software licensing in the amount of $48,756. Council has allocated $160,000 in American Rescue, uh, Plan, the ARPA Fund, um, for this project with a remainder of $68,714 to come from the FY23 budget for IT.
Can we move?
I've kind of got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call?
If I, if I may, before you call the vote, just want, just want to add to, uh, my comment. Um, you know, cyber, cybersecurity and, uh, cyberterrorism is, uh, a big issue, as we all know, was a main theme at the NACO conference I went to earlier this week. Um, and I'm glad that, uh, we are making, we are making this commitment, at least I hope the vote goes our way, to make this commitment into upgrading our, our cybersecurity, uh, so that we won't fall victim to any type of ransomware, any type of, uh, hostage situation of our system. So, um, I'm glad that, um, um, Mr. Durham is here, uh, with us. Uh, he made the council aware of, uh, of this project earlier this evening. Uh, and I think it's one that not just this council, but future councils need to continually work to upgrade systems and making sure that we're keeping, uh, county, uh, information safe and that we're keeping our taxpayers safe as well, because of course, uh, our tax rolls are also kept online as well. So, um, again, I just want to make, make that statement before the vote's taken that this is something that I think should be of high regard, um, for this council and the next.
Yeah, great, thank you, Mr. Pax. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and, uh, we have, uh, the county engineer here, Mr. Ray Clark. Uh, he, he's here to, uh, ask your consideration, um, with regard to bid 2205 Talbot County Sanitary District Sewer Extension, Covey Avenue, Tillman, Talbot County, Maryland. He'll explain his request to you.
Um, counsel, we went up to bid and unfortunately, the lowest responsible bidder is higher than the funds we have available. And so I'd like to try and sit down and negotiate with the low bidder, see if we can make, um, price come back more and more.
Okay. And, and so that this would be done through, uh, modification of the scope, uh, value engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, maybe, you know, we've shortened up the lines or we maybe, you know, maybe doing some modifications on the curb valve, so.
Okay. I'll move to approve, uh, for that negotiation. Okay, got a motion second for, uh, Mr. Clark to negotiate the contract. Madam Secretary, could you?
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Counsel, that completes, completes the county manager report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Okay, we're, public comment. Any, do we have a list or anything? Okay. All right, no public comment? Counsel comment. Mr. Pack?
I think we said enough this evening. At least I have said enough this evening, so I'm going to just let it go at that.
No problem. Okay, all right. Mr. DeVilio?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Lesher?
Just, I think that we heard cause this evening that we need to, we need to move forward on a revision of our, of our impact fees. And to work with the contractor to, to do that. And so I, I know that there's been some discussion of this, but would like to encourage staff to lead us on the next steps toward, toward getting that impact fee study in place.
The council, we, we currently are under contract with Tichler and we will contact them this week and get a schedule that we can come back to you with next council meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lesher, you want to go ahead and?
Yeah. I don't.
You, you got it.
I don't. The council's next meeting is on Tuesday, August 9th at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate legal and, what's the third one? Personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. If there's, as there's nothing else on our agenda, a meeting, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Right. We got, yeah, motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you.